Counselors to your seats, please. I'd ask the Assistant Town Clerk to please take the roll call.
Here. Crocker?
Here.
Cullum? Dagewan?
Here.
Flores?
Here.
Rapkarsetti?
Present.
Hebert? Levac?
Here.
Neary?
Here.
Schnep? Stein Hilber?
Here.
Tinsley?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
You have ten.
We have established quorum. I would like to make an announcement. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known to me at this time. I see. Welcome. Thank you. I'd ask you to stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance, please. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to our meeting, September 19th, 2019. I would like to go over the council rules one more time, if I may. We are about to enter public comment, and in public comment, if there is not, if there is not a public meeting coming forward on the article, we ask that you not speak to the article, and only speak to issues that are not coming forth tonight as a public comment, as a public meeting. That should mean, just so we're clear, if you're here to speak on any of the acquisition for septic, you'll have to wait until that item is called. We'll go into a public meeting, we'll have you come forward, and everyone will be heard, I promise. But that's the perfect example of an item that's not to be spoken at, at, at public comment. With that said, I'd invite anybody to come forward to speak on an item that is not in a public meeting later tonight. And I should remind everybody why I have you. We have a three-minute rule in the chambers, and in fifteen minutes, fifteen seconds, the last fifteen seconds of your three minutes, our Administrator Cynthia Lovell puts up the card, I enter my card, and that's your chance to wrap up your discussion. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bo Chu, and I have a code address of one Main Street. Last week I sang a song, and I got applause, so I'm addicted. Here we go, same song. Dedicated to my sister and my mother, because my sister came and visited me two times last week, and we were greatly estranged for a long time, so it was really wonderful to see you, Ming. Ming means, the gliff in Chinese is, is sun and the moon together. Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a soul like me. I once was lost, but now I'm found. Was blind, but now I see. No applause. A quick pitch, I didn't run my clock. For the homeless shelter, we're doing tie-dye tomorrow at 10 o'clock. Anybody interested in doing tie-dye at the homeless shelter and being hippie again, welcome. Peace.
I may, I may point out, if I may, Ms. Bo, that we also, another rule in the chamber is no applause for speakers, though. But I guess you weren't speaking, you were singing, so. Thank you, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak to an issue?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Whorf-Bain, Director of the Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District. I'm not really coming for an issue. You probably don't, not used to this, I'm coming to be positive, and to thank you, and to really herald all of the efforts of the Cape Cod Chamber, the Hyannis Chamber, the bid, the town of Barnstable, the citizens for putting together a lot of events in the past few years, and how great they've been for the downtown. You know, starting with, for instance, Open Streets has been a great event to pull together the local residents and make them feel part of the community, which is really centered in Hyannis, and feel part of something bigger. And I think that's a really noble effort. And I also want to talk about the long table this year, this summer, a few of you were there, one of you even flicked a switch which lit the beautiful lampposts on the street that you see at night, and it was a really magical evening. And the purpose of the evening was not to make money, but to redirect the reputation of Hyannis. And I just want to let you know that Naples, Florida called us two weeks ago and said, "We heard from many sources that come down here, what a great event you had, and we want to do a long table, and we want to hear how you did it, and we want to do it just like how you did it." And that's really been a goal of ours, is to create a word-of-mouth change that's authentic, that's not about advertising, it's about real change, and change in mentality. And so I think there's so many good works coming out of events, from yoga on the green to Tai Chi to Zumba, to these events, that we want you to know, we want to thank you for being supportive, because they really are best practices, and sometimes when something new comes out, people aren't used to it, and it's very threatening. But true leadership comes from knowing what's right, and standing by it, and continuing to do all the good things, and work together. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please? Terrific, hearing none, close the public comment portion of our meeting. And I want to ask councilors' responses to public comment. Counselors to my left? Yes, Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to comment on the improvement overall that has been occurring on Main Street in Hyannis, with the number of new businesses, the numbers, number of projects that have been ongoing, the long table that I, along with a number of other councilors attended, was, was a terrific event, and I can see why Naples is calling. But we need to continue that improvement, continue that enforcement of issues that have long plagued, if you will, both the east end of, of Main Street as well as other parts, so it's moving all in the right direction, so I applaud what the bid is supporting too.
Counselors? Yes, Councilor Dagewan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Chu, Bo Chu, thank you for coming up, and I mainly just wanted to say to you two, also, when you come the next time, you said that you're offering, they're having an event at the shelter, just mention where the shelter is next time, the homeless shelter, I think, I just want to say that. And also, just to follow up what Elizabeth Whorf-Bain just spoke about, you know, just being positive in our, in the community, coming together, we're not always going to agree on everything, but I, I think that, you know, adding some new events that, and just, just, you know, just, we've got some great things that have, that have come along, and we, some things are working, some things are not, but I think sometimes we're resistant to change, and there's, there has been some change, but just, just, I, just, just be a little more positive about it, I, I think that's the, the image that we want to get across about our, our town and the village of Hyannis. Thank you.
Counselors? Hearing none, I would move forward towards the Housing Choice Bill Workshop, if I may, and I'd like to call up Elizabeth Jenkins, our Director of Planning and Development. I also believe Ruth Wile, our Senior Counselor, is with us tonight, and we are fortunate enough to have Roy O'Hanlon, Legislative Director, Deputy Director of Policy for the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. Thank you, Roy, for making the effort to come down with us tonight.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the council. First off, I want to thank you for putting this item on your agenda. Looks like a busy evening, and I know you have plenty of matters to attend to, so it is much appreciated to, to me, so thank you. So, jump right into this, this is a bill that is pending before the state legislature, and we are, because it's so locally oriented, we are engaging closely with our towns and cities around the state. So I'm just going to jump into the slideshow, if you can bear with me, it's perhaps a little elementary to start, and then we'll jump into a little bit more of the substance. So, the, right now, it's no surprise, around, around the state, we are dealing with a housing crisis, and that is, you know, primarily caused due to a lack of supply. And this chart here, you see the housing production based off of building permits issued, and you can see from 1960 to 1990, there was nearly, roughly 900,000 units issued, and from that time, from 1990 to the 2017, where this, the data ended, you see about half, so the production is slashed in half over that time. All the while, we've had changes in terms of population and, and economics, and so we have seen the lack of supply catch up to us. Move on to the next one. And by no surprise, we have seen home prices go, rise faster than any other state in the country since 1980, so if you look at 1980, we were about average, and since then, we've increased faster than any other state, and we have some of our peers, you know, New York, Oregon, that are similarly, California's on there, and just sort, sort of puts it in perspective of how much these, the impact has been for the state of Massachusetts. And here's another chart with home value and the median two-bedroom rent, and you can see that we are third highest when it comes to median home value, behind just California and Hawaii, and in terms of median two-bed rent, as of February 2019, the data is from the Zillow Research page, we are the, at the top there. And so, that has, myself, you know, resulted in a tremendous amount of financial pressure for our households around the state. So this is for homeowners, if you look at the median household income in, in 2000, that's where a good chunk of our, in terms of households, where we see homeownership, you know, someone making the median income, having the ability to own a home. And then you fast forward to 2017, the chart shifts, and we're talking about cost burden here, so the yellow is cost burden, the green is, is not cost burden, and so, cost burden, sorry, is defined as spends more than 30% of its, of the household's income on housing costs. So, in 2017, nearly half of our households are now burdened, and, and facing, you know, financial pressure because of, of how competitive the market is. And then my next one is on rent. Similar story here, in 2000, 38% of the households making less than 100,000 were, were cost burdened, and today, we see more than half, about 56% are, are cost burdened. So, you can see with the colors, the, the shift in the green and the yellow, that the pressure on folks that are renting is very real as well. And so now, thank you for bearing with me, with a little bit of story, it sort of ties into how, where this bill comes in. So, the bill pending before the state legislature right now makes changes to Chapter 40A, the State Zoning Act. It allows for towns and cities like yourselves to more easily amend your local zoning to bring on new housing. We think it's crucial for more housing production, we think this is, will be a critical tool to get that done. So, this bill, what this bill does is, it reduces the threshold of votes needed to adopt, it's, on this page, it's eight zoning measures that promote housing production. We identify these eight as best practices that are, you know, fairly modest, but will yield smart, you know, dense, environmentally conscious housing, and so forth. I'll just run down a list quickly, just to make sure I don't skip over anything. The first one here is, is, would allow for, by simple majority of a body like yours, to adopt zoning that would allow for the reducing, the reduction of residential dimensional requirements, we're talking, you know, smaller lot sizes, smaller setbacks that can, you know, allow for more density, homes to be built slightly, you know, closer together. The next one is for parking, you know, part, land costs are a big deal here, and so this would allow for the adoption of zoning that would reduce, or allow for, by simple majority, reduction of, of parking ratios. Third point here is, is, is sort of what's central to this whole thing, is, is about allowing for the adoption of zoning that will allow for more dense, smart, transit-oriented, mixed-use housing in, in town centers, in city centers, near transit, and, and generally in smart locations, so this one is tied into smart transit-oriented development. The next component of the, among the eight, are the adoption of, of what we call natural resource protection zoning and open space residential development by right, these are subdivisions that allow for cluster development and pervert, pervert, excuse me, preserves open space. The next one, TDR, is, is not a very common tool used, but it's another best practice to preserve open space, you know, say, in an agricultural setting. And then adopting 40R is, would be, so, you know, an example, actually, you can see on the right, is that a city could adopt a 40R through a simple majority as, as opposed to a two-thirds majority, and that is to, you know, for eligible locations, near transit and dense, to bring on more housing units in our towns and cities. And ADUs, this bill has support from the AARP because of the, it would allow for the adoption of ADUs by right in, in towns and cities, which can be a, you know, a useful tool for, you know, folks aging in place, and, and for, you know, families that are, are expanding. And then, last one is just for, you know, allow for increased density through the special permit process promoting a more flexible development. And then, bear with me, one more slide. This is a highlight, three more pieces, one is sort of a, number nine, is where communities already have this in place, it would allow for, it would reduce the, the two-third vote threshold to a simple majority, where it meets that criteria, and there's a reporting requirement, and also a, a provision that would allow for municipalities to enter into revenue sharing agreements, you know, for parcels that overlap on more than one town. So, overall, keep in mind, just want to highlight here, is that there's no mandated zoning in this bill, there's no mandate that this be adopted, it, it, what it does do is change the law so that these best practices, these housing production best practices could be adopted by a body like yours through a simple majority as opposed to the, the two-thirds majority. So, it's important to, to, you know, in our view, to, to make sure that the local control is maintained, the folks, the local legislative bodies on the ground, the, the experts in our towns and cities know this better than us, so it's, it's not a top-down mandate saying that certain, you know, developments need to be built, or certain types of, of zoning needs to be, you know, placed on, on, on the table. This is just to allow, to better allow for smart best practices to be adopted. And so here are a couple of examples, just to, sometimes zoning is a little dense and, and complex. A city wants to adopt a 40R district, allowing multifamily residential units in a downtown near commuter rail station, transit's important there, that would, this bill would allow that to be adopted by, if, if it's a council of 11. Instead of getting the eight, to get the super majority, it could be done through six. And there's two more examples here, I don't think I need to read through them fully, but for the parking requirement, here's an example, that if they want to reduce the parking from two spaces to one in a particular district, that could be done by a simple majority. And so, I want to just highlight what this bill doesn't do, it doesn't change other, the scope is limited to those zoning provisions that I just highlighted, it doesn't go further than that, as far as, you know, changing something from limited business to heavy industrial, or, or a local sign bylaw, or increasing the lot size, which would, you know, ultimately decrease the overall density, this is about housing production. And then here's just a summary slide on, on why it is so important that each community be able to control its own destiny here. Again, there's no mandates in this bill, it's about empowering our, you know, our, you know, councils like yours, our planners, mayors, and managers, and, and the folks on the ground to implement what we think is important, smart practices that can bring on housing production, and sort of close that gap on, on, on what, you know, we're seeing as, as a supply challenge. So, I know Barnstable has really been a, you know, a leader in terms of housing production, when you look at statewide, you know, take a step back and look at statewide, your Housing Choice Community, I think you were awarded a grant last year, obviously Gateway City, you've used, I believe, CPA dollars to support housing, you've got some multifamily zoning, so I commend you for what your leadership has been doing here in terms of production, but unfortunately, it's tru across the Commonwealth, so we see so many projects come to a, a body like yourselves and end up, you know, getting 60% or, you know, 63% and, and dying, and so we think that the local zoning process has, has played a role in, in preventing good projects from, from going forward. So we think that this is a way to empower local governments, empower, you know, residents as well, to, to bring more housing online. And so, last slide here, I won't go through it, but these are just some of the groups that have been supportive, it's been a very collaborative process to, to, you know, people smarter than me came up with a lot of the provisions in here, that, so we have, you know, the Mass Municipal Association, and, and some key groups here that have worked closely, the Home Builders, AARP, that have got behind this bill because they recognize the importance of, and, you know, providing some tools to, at the local level, to, to get some, you know, more housing, to help close this gap into, you know, bring, you know, more supply to help, you know, bring down costs as well. So that's my spiel. I will turn it over to Mr. President, and, and, you know, entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you. Obviously, tonight on the new business, we have 2020-031, which would be our discussion, so at any time, councilors feel as though they'd like to ask some questions, I'll be glad to, but I would also invite our other panel members to speak to the issue and how you feel it may impact the town, and how you feel about the proposed bill.
Well, I think Mr. O'Hanlon did a, a very excellent job in providing you an overview with the legislation, you know, I think we're more than happy to, to be here to answer questions about how it might impact us locally, you know, I'll just add that, that I think, at least from the perspective of the Planning and Development Department, we are committed to bringing zoning changes forward that, to the council that support increased housing production in our community, in a way that's consistent with the desires of our community and our community character. So, yeah, through a comprehensive process, and again, the quantum vote, I think that's a, certainly a policy issue for, for you to consider, but I know we've been very dedicated to housing production, and have you, and, and we look forward to continuing that partnership in the future.
Could I ask for a little follow-up, if I may? We heard several times from the Deputy Director that it's all about boards like ours and so forth, but truly, it's going to give an opportunity to, for Zoning Board of Appeals or Planning Boards and so forth, as I see it, is that correct?
So there are sort of two, really, I think the, the, of the nine examples that Mr. O'Hanlon worked through, the majority of them are those that, are those that address legislative changes, so zoning changes that would be enacted by the council. So with the exception of perhaps the, the special permit process, the effect of this bill, again, would be, would be on votes relative to zoning changes, I think, and, and please, either one of you correct me, I think, again, with the exception of the vote for certain defined special permit votes in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals or Planning Board, so, again, I think for the most port, for the most part, it is through that zoning amendment process where this has an effect, again, with some small exceptions for the, the votes, which, again, now are, are two-thirds required for special permits in front of Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning.
But if adopted by our group, if we're the party with concern on this, that would change the vote counts in zoning and planning?
So again, if adopted by the legislature, and there were qualifying special permits that came through those groups, then yes, it would change the quantum vote, is my understanding.
Ruth, would you like to add anything?
No, I have no, nothing else to add, but in, just in raw numbers, so if the council wanted to reduce dimensional requirements, say, in lot sizes, then instead of requiring nine votes, it would be seven votes, it would become a simple majority of the whole council. And in the few instances where the Zoning Board of Appeals or, or Planning Board were involved, it would be, again, a majority of the full boards in both cases, so that's how it would affect the vote.
Yes, we send our zoning out to the Planning Board and have to have their feedback before it comes forward, and we sometimes, if we don't have the support, we also have repercussions for that. So how would it affect us if we send the legislation out to the zoning board, or for the Planning Board for its approval?
It would not affect the, in that instance, it doesn't affect the quantum vote, it's only when you were voting on the adoption, and in the limited special permits that are laid out. laid out in the proposed act.
Again, those groups, the planning board works only in an advisory capacity relative to zoning. So what's coming to you now is a reflection of a majority vote, not a supermajority.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions where we have the group in front of us? Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rory, just a couple of quick questions. As the legislative director for the Department of Economic Development, what is the sense that you have relative to the pulse of the House of Representatives to basically move this forward? Or is it going to go to committee and die a death like many bills do? And who is sponsoring it on the Senate side? Because eventually they'll have to go to some kind of a joint committee, I would assume.
So, yeah, unfortunately I did die last session. We are, I think, part of the reason, I think, you know, the, the reason I'm here this evening is I think one of the key points for us to highlight is that we're, you know, trying to demonstrate that there's support at the local level. And so right now it's pending before the joint committee on housing. The bill is sponsored by Governor Baker. It's before the joint committee on housing and we're working hard to get it to a point where it advances from committee and then it moves closer to the, likely the House floor and then over to the Senate. There are other bills out there, of course, on housing that have different proposals, but we think this is a balanced approach that, balanced and thoughtful approach that works from, you know, the bottom up as opposed to the top down. And so I don't know what the, you know, we're hopeful, we're working hard to try and get it to a good place and by talking to people, meeting with folks and really trying to educate, educate folks while also educate ourselves and hopefully build a consensus and get to a point where it advances.
Have you polled the Cape delegation? Do you know where they stand as a group?
We've had very good meetings with, with just about all of the delegation, you know, productive, good discussions. I don't want to speak on anyone's behalf, but you certainly have a great leaders up at Beacon Hill. And so we've had very good substantive discussions with them and, you know, feel good about it.
And just one final question relative to the accessory dwelling units. If in fact this bill does become law down the road, the language suggests that anybody who is a homeowner could create an accessory dwelling by right as opposed to having to go before any board. Am I interpreting that correctly?
The Act provides a specific definition of what accessory dwelling units would qualify, but stepping back, what Rory indicated, this compels the town council to do not one thing.
I understand that.
So if the town council wants to entertain an accessory dwelling by special permit, for example, to really respond to your question, then that would still require two-thirds.
But doesn't this bill, doesn't this new law eliminate that need for that vote?
It does.
Because now by right, I as a homeowner can put on an accessory dwelling. So in essence, what we're really saying is turning the entire town into a multi-dwelling neighborhood.
If I may respond a little bit further. If the town council wanted to adopt an accessory dwelling unit law, they could make it as of right, propose it as of right, and then you would need a simple majority, which is seven of the entire, of the 13-member council. If instead, the town council wanted to do an accessory dwelling unit ordinance by special permit, then, or any other mechanism, and you didn't, or there are certain qualifications in this bill, for example, it has to be 900 feet, square feet or less, then you would retain the supermajority, which applies to almost all other zoning proposals, except those that are specifically delineated in the proposed act.
So this, this law, if it is passed, does not usurp the authority, if you will, of the town council in terms of maintaining single-family neighborhoods?
This doesn't compel you to take any steps.
I just want to clarify that.
Period.
Yeah, if I may, it would, you would still have to adopt that by right provision to adopt that type of zoning. And if for a special permit, it would remain a supermajority, just for.
I just want to make sure the legislation as written does not supersede our authority to basically change what neighborhoods look like and what traditionally Cape Cod neighborhoods have looked like. Thank you.
Councilor Bean Bender?
So just as a follow-up and a continuation of that thought, so if I understand this correctly, basically what this act does then, it just provides us the pathway to a simple majority as opposed to a two-thirds vote. And we may choose to adopt some of it of this act, pieces of this act, and choose not to adopt any of it. And we still retain local right to determine whether or not we want to retain, can we make the choice to retain a two-thirds majority vote on these? Okay, so we are being superseded by the state on that.
So, no, I think this is, I mean, this is sort of a key and important distinction. So this vote changes, or it makes an exception to the two-thirds majority requirement to pass zoning in state law for the nine provisions that Mr. O'Hanlon went through. So that would be adopted across the Commonwealth. It is certainly up to our municipality whether we want to bring zoning amendments forward that match any of those nine outlined provisions in the legislation. So again, no sort of, there's no, as Rory said, there's nothing that compels us to bring any of those provisions forward, but should we choose to bring them forward, it changes the number of required votes.
As this bill moves through the legislative process, do you see other amendments or changes being made into the language that the governor has filed?
At this point, Mr. Vice President, I think it's hard to, I think, you know, the legislature, it was going to.
Not in the legislature and how they act.
They will, you know, there's certainly, there are certainly members of the House and Senate that have, you know, different views of the world, that some may want to see more, that want to see, you know, more teeth in a proposal. So there's certainly ideas that are, we're closely watching the other bills that are pending. So there are definitely other ideas and concepts and priorities out there, but we are, you know, we're hopeful, you know, there's a lot of support for this particular bill, a lot of broad support. And zoning is obviously a, I don't need to tell members of the council that it's a, you know, once you start playing with the levers, you start, you know, people have different interests and priorities, whether it's, you know, municipalities or builders or in the environmental group. So we think this strikes a delicate balance that we're, you know, we're hoping to do our best to keep it intact, but, you know, we are subject to the.
There's the old expression, the two things that you don't want to see being made in life are sausage and legislation. So in terms of that, I would hope that what has been written stays as close to the original as possible. And towards that end, could we get a copy of your PowerPoint? Would that be possible through, Elizabeth?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Rapka Sutti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation. A couple of questions were already asked, but what the bill did not pass at last vote, can you tell me what the votes were?
When it emerged from the joint committee on housing last session, I believe the vote was 12 to one. And it unfortunately didn't proceed to the House floor last session, so there was, it's the only vote on the record.
Yep, okay. So Elizabeth, if someone brought forth a proposal to reduce zoning from two acre to one acre, that would only require a simple majority of the council, is that correct?
Correct. So if that, if, again, that proposal was brought forward and it ended up at a vote of the town council, the votes required would be seven as opposed to nine.
Yeah, and so not necessarily that would come through, but that makes it much easier for something like that to be changed, which would considerably alter the look of our community. So just be wary of that. So thank you.
Any other counselors? Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Beck. Oh, I'm sorry. You want to follow all these finger points? I don't know. Well, thank you very much for making the time to come down and see us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I'd ask the town manager to come forward for the town manager's communication, please.
Good evening. Mark Elstow, town manager. This is my update for the period of September 6th through September 19th. As we have been doing, the second meeting of each month, we give a update to our comprehensive water management planning. So at this time, I'll ask Director Santos to come up and provide that update.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dan Santos, the Director of Public Works. Mr. President, Vice President, counselors. So my intention, as the managers just said, is to give an update, a brief update. Updated you last on August 15th on the wastewater efforts in the town. So this is our timeframe chart or timeline for our summer and fall of 2019. We are, you know, we're in the, we're in the end zone on this. We're very close to having our comprehensive wastewater management plan document submitted to the council for review and released to the public as a draft, which will ultimately be submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection and hopefully in November and the Cape Cod Commission, and then it will receive its regulatory review and hopefully approval. What our intent is that at the next town council meeting on October 3rd, that we will present the draft CWMP to the council. And then that will be followed by a 30-day presentation, review period, public review period. We have continued to brief internally. We are scheduling during that month, we will be scheduling a series of meetings in the community, at least four, in separate venues around the community to brief the presentation to the public and to receive input. And then as I said, in November, we hope to submit that document. So what we've been doing in the last month is we continue to incorporate the changes that have been made to the plan over the last several months, working with leadership and you all, which brought that ultimately down to a 30-year, three 10-year phases plan. And relative to the report writing, seven of the eight sections have been written. The eighth section is the environmental impact report, which we are having done by consultant as we have a lot of expertise in public works. We don't have the expertise in that particular area, so we're going to be, we've subbed that out to a contractor, but they needed to take the plan in its final form so that they can do that impact report. And on these sewer projects, that's generally kind of a pro forma review. They're generally not environmental related issues that would hold that up. So I don't, I think that will be fine. Build-out projections, which are part of the CWMP or the comprehensive plan, we're going to incorporate in the next week or so. The financial plan, since we changed it from a 60-year to a 30-year overall plan, the Director of Finance, Mark Milne, has been working diligently on the financial plan, and we'll have a draft of that in the report. And we've worked on developing phase one project sequencing. I've mentioned to you in the past, one of the important aspects in this CWMP is to make sure it complies with the Clean Water Act and it meets the standards that we're required to meet. And the way we do that is we submit the plan to UMass Dartmouth, their School for Marine Science and Technology, and they run a model. And it's the same model that they calculated what the loading capacity is of these water bodies. So they basically, we got to pass muster with them that, hey, this plan's going to work. They were originally intended to get that to us by the end of August. They've now promised that by September 30th, and I hope they get it done. We're, I know the managers contacted them and they've made promises to us, so very important aspect of this. And finally, relative to public outreach, I said we're going to be doing some meetings, working with Channel 18. We've been working on developing multimedia presentation videos, as much information as we can package to have available on Channel 18 and on YouTube and all the other places, the social media. We've been briefing departments internally so that our team, the entire town team is aware of the plan and understands what's going to be happening relative to wastewater over the next 30 years, you know, so, and many people are involved, you know, from MEA who deal with the water quality and the water bodies, our planning and development folks with build-out and our planning, our HR, because we're hiring more people. Everyone's really involved in this big team effort. So we want to make sure everyone knows, the people that work here, and if someone asks them, hey, what's this wastewater plan I hear about? They can, they can talk to it intelligently. Few other issues, updates, Joint Base Cape Cod, that's the initiative to have the ability to treat and dispose of wastewater at Joint Base Cape Cod, primarily because we have some restrictions on affluent disposal in this town and that might be an option that works for us. So those negotiations continue. The town manager, I think later on this evening, will brief you on those specifics of that. Sampson's Island dredging in Catuitt, this is phase two of the dredging project. We've had the pre-bid meeting. The county dredge will be doing that work. That work is proposed to start on October 15th, and I have no reason to believe at this point that that will not occur. The Mill Pond dredging, to increase the ability of that to treat for nitrogen, we continue to talk with the regulators. And as I've said in the past, you know, this is, this is a tough one because it is relative to the endangered species program. We're making progress, but it's slow going. We're going to continue to talk to them. And finally, on the Marson's Mills River system, which is above the Marson's, the Mill Pond series of bogs in the river, we have been working on a private-public partnership with the Environmental Protection Agency, Department of Environmental Protection, Possible Clean Water Coalition and the Nature Conservancy on the design and installation of alternatives. And there's a variety of alternatives from septic systems to wetland systems that are being proposed, where these would be paid for by separate investors to prove out these technologies. So this is progressing very nicely. We've met with them recently and this could be a very large win, not only for Barnstable, but for these new technologies to be applied throughout the Cape and in regions like ours. You can see, you've seen this before, the phases, the red being phase one, which we're primarily focused on right now. And then finally, one of the efforts that we've been working on is to break down phase one into separate projects. We can't do all that red in one. So all these different colors are what would be considered a project. We'd go out to bid for that project, work on that and then work on the next one. Some of them may be done parallel, some in series. And what we're working on now is the actual sequencing. So these are the projects. We haven't finalized which one will be number one, two, three, other than those that we've, you've already funded for design, and those will be, those are underway as we speak. So that's my update and be happy to address any questions you might have.
Counselors, we have a draft coming our way shortly. Would anybody have any questions that might pertain in that direction? Thank you very much, Mr. Director.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing a lot more.
Mark Elstow, town manager, I'll continue with my manager's update. We are proceeding with the tasks in the updated budget action calendar for FY 2021 is scheduled. I've given you an attached updated schedule. The town manager has issued the FY 2021 operating and capital budget instructions to staff. Proposed calendar year fee changes are due by staff to my office October 21st, and the calendar year fee hearing is scheduled for November 12th, 2019. the calendar year fee hearing is scheduled for November 12th, 2019. The hearing will be in this room. Just to remind everybody, we have calendar and fiscal year fees that fall under the town manager. We also have fees in the town that fall under the town council. So the fees that fall under the town manager, we build into our annual budget process, and they're due by a certain date, and then they go under review. They're proposed, they move forward to hearing, we hold hearings. I typically try to give at least 30 days additional comment after the hearings, in case public can't come to the meeting. We do record it in this room and televise those hearings. I look for input from our public certainly, and then make a decision relevant to those fee changes. We anticipate a joint meeting workshop with the school committee to review the financial condition of the town on November 21st, 2019. So that's actually a town council, school committee workshop. So that is also an update from the last calendar. And all this is available on our website, so please look there. If you can't find it, certainly reach out to myself or our finance director, or for, for that matter, most of our staff can, can clearly direct you to where you can find any given fiscal year's budget documents. On September 9th, 2019, I attended a municipal working group meeting at the State House. This is a working group with Lieutenant Governor, including mayors and city and town managers from around the Commonwealth to discuss how our state government can better serve cities and town needs. We discussed the municipal vulnerability preparedness program, community compact connector portal, and the housing choice program. And actually, at that meeting, that's when they asked if they could come tonight and present this particular piece of legislation. During these meetings, we have an open dialogue on the, on agenda items, and each agenda, usually we meet about quarterly. The agendas vary, and we're able to give direct input into helping our state government provide improved support to communities in Massachusetts. And I look forward to the next meeting. They are very productive working sessions. I'm going to speak to the mass vulnerability preparedness next, but I will talk a little bit about the community compact connector portal. And what they're doing is they're utilizing the state website, and Division of Local Services is working with all of the agencies in the state to do a lot of different things, but the specific presentation we had was relevant to grants, grants of all kinds, housing grants, education grants, public safety grants, environmental grants, infrastructure grants. And they're basically putting them on a calendar, and then they're, and so you can go into that calendar, and you can look at what are the upcoming grants and what are the deadlines. And this was expressed to them because many of us have full-time or higher support in the area of grant writing. And I'd rather spend the time writing the grant than I would trying to find out about the grant and researching it, quite honestly. So this streamlines that process. It's also going to be able to send direct alerts when things like notice of a grant or a deadline is coming directly to the decision-makers, specifically town managers, city managers, mayors. And then they can receive that, any staff member, anybody can access this. This will be a public, you know, this is open to the public to look at, but it becomes a very functional tool for us as we pursue the various funding that is out there and available by the state. So it's, you know, it's far improved over trying to figure out where money is and how to access it, and who might be eligible, and what the deadlines are. It'll be all right there in front of you. It's going to be in Google. You'll be able to download it on, in our case, we have Outlook. You'll be able to download it onto the Outlook calendar. So very good, functional, practical meeting, looking to add value for what we have to do as cities and towns in Massachusetts. Still on September 9th, we received notice, and I've attached it, from the Secretary of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, that the town of Barnstable has been designated by the Commonwealth as a municipal vulnerability preparedness community for its completion of the community resiliency building planning process. This MVP community designation makes Barnstable eligible to apply for MVP action grants as administered by DEA and may receive increased standing in future state grant funding opportunities. And I've attached a handout that they gave us that identifies a proposal to, to do just that, to generate significant revenues and therefore make available those monies to communities that have been certified in their efforts to, to address these resiliency, especially coastal resiliency issues. It's not all coastal, though. There's a lot of rivers and, and, and other concerns around the state of Massachusetts. So, so we've positioned ourselves well, and I thank our staff, and I thank the Cape Cod Commission for working with us on that and assisting us in getting that designation. On September 13th, we received notice, and I've attached that, from the Mass Clean Water Trust and the State Treasurer, the treasurer, I'm sorry, that Barnstable's MAR Treatment Facility Upgrade Project has been awarded a 6.43% or $670,000 principal subsidy. And we use the SRF for these, and we get low interest rates. Sometimes we get principal subsidies. They alluded to it at the award ceremony several weeks ago. We received that letter. So that's, that's good news. It assists in trying to keep down the capital, the principal on the capital costs associated with, with, with what we're doing in our water supply division at Public Works within the Hyannis water supply. And we greatly appreciate the support and thank the Commonwealth for providing continued assistance for those efforts in providing high-quality drinking water to our residents. On September 13th, I was informed by Jack Units that the Barnstable County Fire Training Academy had partnered with the town of Provincetown, they had to partner with the town to access this grant. They partnered with the town of Provincetown to receive a FEMA grant for assistance to firefighters program in the amount of $636,000. These funds can be utilized to purchase burn building to be sited at Joint Base Cape Cod, allowing the Barnstable County Fire Training Academy to continue its efforts to relocate the fire training academy to the Joint Base Cape Cod. As you know, they've shut down the operation here in Barnstable. They're actually going through the review by DEP to clean up that site and looking for a new home. Funding is always a challenge, and they've received support, I believe total now, they may be almost to $1 million in support. This makes the relocation to JBCC real. I had a discussion today with, with the director at Barnstable Fire Training Academy, and we'll be working with them to assist on securing a, a site out there so that they can provide that very important fire training services to all of our firefighters across Cape Cod. On May 28th, on behalf of the town, I submitted a letter of intent in response to the statement of needs issued for Joint Base Cape Cod regarding the town's interest in water and wastewater facilities on Joint Base Cape Cod. The letter of intent was received and taken under advisement. And on July 12th, we received a response letter requesting a final proposal by September 30th of 2019. September 30th of 2019 is a couple of weeks away at this point. We're preparing a final proposal and intend to provide, provide that proposal by that specified date. And as you know, Barnstable's been studying the possibility of acquiring land rights on Joint Base Cape Cod for future wastewater treatment and disposal. Our first step in this endeavor is to acquire the existing treatment and disposal systems being offered by the Air National Guard via the statement of needs. The thought was by acquiring those assets in the short term, we would secure our position for long-term property ownership or long-term lease options to cite future expanded treatment and disposal facilities. You also are aware that we've been working with Mashpee, Thalmouth, Bourne, and Sandwich on evaluating this. And I know in the past I've provided you reports and links to report, and I hope everybody could open them. There's a lot of information there. It's been extremely valuable. Initially, the four communities, not including Barnstable, received about a quarter of a million-dollar grant from the state to begin this. Our town council supported us in an additional funding request so we could take this information further, so that we could understand the existing facilities out there and the costs associating, associated with pursuing this type of option. During the process with the Air National Guard, they strongly suggested that we have discussions with the other proposer relevant to this. The other proposer's focus is on the short-term management of the existing facilities out there, both water and wastewater. Our true interest here is long-term, future discharge capacity, treatment capacity, but more discharge capacity. We all know the challenges that we have, and we know that those challenges will become greater in the future, to discharge wastewater within the area where we extract our drinking water. So we wanted to look at the opportunity to take wastewater out of the area where we certainly extract our, our drinking water, and more specifically to help mitigate some of the, you know, nutrient load that we're also concerned about. But I think that the, the difficulties associated with having wastewater intermingled with drinking water are clear to us at this point, and we know that this is only going to become more challenging in the future, which merits this level of effort to look outside of the normal box. This opportunity by Air National Guard provided us that opportunity. They've said to us that the other proposer that I assume will be proceeding is, is, is focused short-term, dealing with the existing system, does this for the Department of Defense across the country, and certainly we have common interests here, and we have different interests and priorities. And we've been having those discussions with this other company. And, and we'll try, and, and the proposal at this point is that we're looking at a single unified proposal rather than two competing proposals. The benefits we see of doing this, it secures our long-term goal. The, the other company isn't interested in the, interested in the long-term land-related issues. They're looking at managing the existing facility. So the focus be, it actually minimizes our risk of owning these aging assets and guaranteeing the functionality of those assets. That would go with, in essence, a partner that we would have. You know, there's risk in owning the water system as well. Both of them are well into their useful life, certainly not beyond our capabilities to manage either. If you remember, the town of Barnstable acquired the Hyannis Water when it was a private company and, and not in an unsimilar situation. So certainly, you know, we, we have the capability of doing this. We also run a much larger wastewater treatment facility at this point. But we saw the advantages of this partnership, you know, and, and so we are moving forward that. They, you know, the, this other entity would manage the existing customers who are base and, and county located on the base customers. They would manage that. They would, you know, we have to increase the costs as they improve the system. They would collect the bills certainly from that. What do we do? We secure the rights to, to the future opportunity, both in writing, in, in the land that's out there, and also a commitment from this partner to not only work with us on future wastewater treatment and flow, but we are in discussions with the other four communities about making sure that we have that collaborative relationship. We, we truly feel that this is a regional issue. We believe that our strength is by unifying and being able to go to the state and federal government to look for support, whether it's permits or funding or other. And so we believe at this point that, that this, that this relationship is something that we are going to pursue pending final, you know, pending putting a final agreement together. And we have to make sure that we're not put at a disadvantage in any aspect of this, and the great work that our staff has done on this to date, and the reviews that I have done, leads me to believe that we are in a very good position in this relationship. Certainly, if we did it alone, we would have complete control. So in partnering with anybody, you always lose a portion of control. And so we really needed to step back and say, what are our priorities? Our priorities are securing land specifically for affluent discharge in the future and other opportunities certainly related to water. And we, in this agreement, can and will secure that, or else we would proceed independently. Now, certainly, there are other aspects of the agreement, but the final steps that I'm looking at here are to finalize this agreement in the coming days. And we would need to be into a signed agreement submitted. If we go individually by the 30th of September, if we go in a unified manner with one proposal with this other entity, by the 30th of September. You've authorized me to proceed with these discussions, and I will keep you advised as I progress on this matter. It is a significant matter that will certainly receive, you know, statewide, but national recognition. Finally, on Friday, September 19th, 2019, I met with Vineyard Wind to discuss the schedule, not only for what's occurring in Phase One, which they remain optimistic about and feel as though they are about a year behind at this point to get through some of the permits, permitting that is still, that still lies ahead for them. To talk about the Phase Two project, which they will be, I will leave the details to them because I am not a proponent of this project. We are the host community, where they're looking to have a second landing in the town of Barnstable, and I expect that in the coming weeks, definitely months, there will be discussion of that. But the real reason for the meeting was that they wanted to discuss the opportunity to host Phase Three of the Vineyard Wind proposal. And I responded to them that we are receptive to those discussions regarding modifying the existing host agreement, and I anticipate additional discussions in coming months, not years, months. So I will keep you advised as well on the progress of that effort. That concludes my town manager report.
Councillors, any questions? Yes, Consulate Hebra.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark. Mark, is it safe to say when we look at Joint Base Cape Cod, the, the private entity, their major concern is most probably improvements to the facility that exists right now and to further develop the facility? Maybe they have access to, to contracts with the federal government, Department of Defense, which we would benefit from in the long run? Is it, is it talk of how we're going to improve that?
They're, they're a private business for profit.
Right, right.
So they, and they do this for the Department of Defense. They come into facilities where they have aging water and wastewater infrastructure, and they take it over and they operate it, and they, you know, recover the cost of that capital improvement and operation through the fees that they charge.
Okay.
So that, that's what they do. In sitting and looking at what we are challenged with here on Cape Cod, and, you know, and knowing that they have an affluent discharge, that it's a relatively small wastewater treatment plant, quite honestly, but, but they have an affluent discharge, they have land, they're not necessarily down, up gradient of the same sort of embayment systems that we have, especially on the south side of our Cape. So there's a real opportunity here for the future for us, and that's why we were interested in this, to look to utilize that opportunity for affluent discharge. I don't think that they were contemplating that initially. I think since we have entered this discussion, meaning the town of Barnstable has entered this discussion, much of it was just planning and very speculative. This made it real. We are, we are going to put in a proposal. We will either do it with them or without them. But I think our interest is long-term securing the land and the ability securing the land and the ability to discharge effluent. Their interest, their, their objective is to manage the existing facilities, do the necessary upgrades, and then, they will charge back the people utilizing that facility for those services.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Raff Griswold.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark. Just going back, congratulations on getting your, your principal subsidy tied down. Once our, the, the CWMP is approved, can we go back and renegotiate that?
Principal subsidy?
Well, no, no.
Or the no interest?
No, the low interest, because you mentioned low interest. Can we go back and ask for zero interest?
Not on water.
Not on water. Okay.
No, not on water supply. Clean water, yes.
Okay.
And, and, well, I say yes in the sense that we aren't at the point where we are bonding this yet. So, there will absolutely be a breakpoint, meaning if they go out and borrow the money, and they establish what the terms of that are, that's that. But, we're not there on many of the projects. We're actually, I believe we're eligible now.
Are we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because everything we're doing is, has a component of nutrient removal with it. And I think that the state is looking differently at how they allow the 30-year no-interest relevant to nutrient removal. And so, I, I, and also, Barnstable's one of the stronger communities in the state of Massachusetts financially, so they do look for us to be successful in securing these loans, because we strengthen their bond pool.
Sure. Also, Mr. President, I see on the agenda there is an executive session to discuss Joint Base Cape Cod. So, shall I hold my questions about that proposal and whatnot for executive session?
No, I believe we're going to discuss that issue tonight, right here at this time. I, I don't believe we have to go in the executive session.
Okay. Well, so, not knowing what your proposal looks like, other than the, the overall, you know, look of it, I would hope the proposal has in it, you know, binding agreements with the other towns. What if other towns all of a sudden go and default? How do we recover our money? Obviously, the town's looking not only to dispose of our effluent, and perhaps treat some, but to collect other towns and make money on this. So...
Actually, you want me to answer that one while we're on it?
Well, yeah. Where would the funding come from for, for the design? Because certainly, you said the wastewater treatment plants, it, I think it only takes 100,000 gallons, or maybe that's the, the, the permit, but we're talking about millions of gallons.
Yes, we are.
So...
It'd be a whole separate process relevant to, well, first of all, no, we're not, we're not establishing, this is a town of Barnstable alone, or a town of Barnstable with this private business agreement. And the other communities are not participating in this. They, they did not when the...
No, no, I realize that, but the other communities, you're, you're talking about regional, a regional approach.
Yes, absolutely.
You're accepting either their effluent, or you're accepting their, their, you know, their sludge for treatment. So...
Well, there will absolutely be that opportunity in the future for all of us to sit down, and each of us, well, really, Barnstable and then the other four have different forms of government, but they would have to secure the appropriate authorizations and funding to participate to the percentage share that they would contribute to a regional facility. We'd have to secure all of those, you know, authorizations on each behalf, including the town of Barnstable's, which would be an issue that would become publicly, come publicly before certainly many boards, I'm sure, but ultimately Town Council for decision. And then, we would proceed. We are trying to tie these outside of this agreement. This agreement basically just lays out us being able to secure land, the pursuit of the lands out there in the future. It, it secures common permitting that may occur on those lands. It, it allows us assignability. It allows us to be able to opt out at any time if we find that this does not work out to the way that we are looking to it for a solution.
I guess, I guess, you know, since this is a pretty large undertaking, do we have any idea of how DEP's going to accept, you know, you're talking about land, you're talking about land for disposal. Do you have any, any?
We do. We actually have approached, I've spoken with the, mostly with the deputy commissioner, though the commissioner has been somewhat involved. And they actually submitted a letter out of the southeast region in support of this. They've actually estimated what the capacity of future effluent discharge beds could be. I think that the reason we're even still considered as an option is because of the regional need for this, because of the history of Barnstable and its ability to manage assets. And so, they know that we don't come to the table just making this up, hoping something will result from it. And we have strong financial structures. We have a decision-making ability here that is unique on Cape Cod certainly. But I think they're looking for us to collectively come together with the other towns. Certainly, DEP's involvement has recognized that need, the studies that we've done, and they've assisted in a portion of the funding, are looking for us to come to closure on that issue. And that is the intent.
Okay. And finally, if I may, I'll, I'll speak to you about some other things.
Yeah, oh, of course, of course.
But, the, the, I just lost my thought. The, the permitting for this, I'll, I'll hold it. I'll hold it.
At this point, we're, just, just to be clear, too, this really puts us in a position where we're, we're probably going to spend years on this, years. This keeps us in a position, and then now we may have a partner, keeps us in a position to, to achieve a regional facility that we have control in, that allows us to both look at water and wastewater in the future. If we opt out, then the best we can hope for is we'll be somebody else's customer, maybe. So, that's really what we're trying to do with this.
Yes, Councilor Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation, Mark. Again, kudos to, I think many of us would love to have a principal reduction in mortgage and those type of, type of things. But as a follow-up, I think this is just more of an indication of the leadership of the town and your staff. We, we've heard it time and time again of grants coming along and these type of things. We're, we're positioning ourselves as a town to get ahead of issues, whether it be wastewater, whether it be water quality. And I think going forward, this has to be part, or continue to be part of our, of our direction that we, that we drive the town. There are, there are many issues that we're faced with, with water, with estuaries, with nitrogen loading, and, and by acting, I think it opens up possibilities for, for additional subsidies and grants from the state. So, congratulations on that. That's great.
Thank you.
Counselors?
Yes.
Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, thank you for that presentation. I'm excited that we have been designated as a municipal vulnerability preparedness community, because that does open up, according to the, the backup sheet, opportunities in terms of loans and grants through the municipal vulnerability preparedness program, to basically improve drainage and culverts, to do stormwater upgrades and mitigation. So, I'm curious, if monies are available through this new source. As you know, in Precinct One, Commerce, Marispin Creek, where we have the culvert, that even though Woods Hole Engineering suggests that it's working, but probably could work better, will we be going after monies to support?
In September.
In the immediate, in September, we will.
$10 million this year. They really haven't awarded too many capital project yet. Most of it has been for study and plans. I think there's been one major capital so far. So, this is really the beginning of accessing capital monies. And we're going to go for either the north side culvert issue, or we have one on the south side in Hyannis. We're just going to try to look at what would be a more eligible project under this program. There are other funding sources as well that we will try to pursue, and hopefully, we'll, we'll figure that out so that we remain eligible as we go forward.
Thank you.
Successfully eligible.
Just know that those of us that live in Barnstable Village and come up with...
Yes, sir. We're, we're clear.
...are looking forward to mitigating this ASAP, so we don't have that flooding disaster that we've had over the past few years. And I commend once again the fact that we're designated, which opens up the door to be able to access those, those monies. So, thank you.
Yep.
Counselors?
I'd have a few questions if I could.
Yes, sir.
When we had the opening of the Maier Treatment System, we did have the DPW, the DEP Deputy Director down. And he was so complimentary when he and I were speaking off to the side. He was very clear on our efforts about Joint Base. He was very clear about stepping up here at Maier. So, it, it doesn't surprise me that we have a good working relationship, which will help us well into the future. And in the cases of people awarding grants, it'll, it'll help us tremendously. So, again, that's an effort that has been continued by all of your, and, your staff, and it's, it's really resonates, because he was doing backflips when he was telling me, you guys have stepped up. You guys are there every time we bring up an issue. You guys are important people to us. We call you to understand your perception on this. So, he was, he really recognized the help that we brought forward for their group as well. I'm interested to see if, on the county fire training, if the county fire training has identified a site on Joint Base Cape Cod. The last time we were discussing this, these things were rolling, but they still were hesitant to pick one of the sheds, even if it was something that was temporary. Have we got any feedback on the county's actual location or?
They're in discussions about the specific location. So, these would be three or four-story prefab units, as I understand it, that would be used as a burn building, there's mazes, there's all sorts of different capabilities for training. And it's a, it's a clean sort of burn that they could do. And they're in that process, and that's why we've, because we have a very good working relationship with the base, and, you know, we certainly are there to support the county and all of our region for that matter, and the firefighters in our region to get that training they need. So, I, I hope that in the next 30 days, I'll report back to you that we, there's some sort of preliminary agreement on where they're going to go with this, because these monies, when they come from FEMA or anybody else, have a timeline. So, this isn't something that they're going to be able to go, I don't know if it's more than 12 months on. They're going to need to make decisions. This makes it real. Before, when you don't have money, you can talk all you want. Now, they have money to do this, and now it's time to make a decision and utilize this money to cite it out at Joint Base Cape Cod. And we will assist.
We have friends in the audience who are on districts like COMM, and at some point tonight, I'll try to get them to the mic to assist us with this as well. This is manager communication, so it's a limited discussion. Thank you, though. Happy, thank you for coming tonight, by the way. When we go on to the Joint Base Cape Cod discussion, this is something that obviously is forward-thinking again, and as I said, DEP knew of it. They knew how we were discussing possible permits in the future and so forth. Could you explain the permitting process that you are negotiating for? Because it's one thing to have a partner who wants to run the existing system, and both systems are smaller than things we already run. So, it wasn't as though we weren't capable of that. It was just that it was sensible to have them dive into that. But what we were talking about clearly, as I recall, you know, the permits for issues as we go forward in the future.
Correct.
And they can play a role with us as we go forward, or if I remember correctly, we also have the ability to give them notice and chase the permits ourselves.
Absolutely.
So, could you explain that?
Yes.
Because that's very important to my counselors as well.
Absolutely, and an excellent question. So, so our hope would be that we partner with somebody that manages the existing facilities well, and there is some excess capacity, and we would have rights to be able to access that capacity, as would other existing customers and future customers. When we look at really the future facility, we would engage in a discussion, hopefully collectively with the other communities, but maybe not. I don't know what the other communities will do. I will only hopefully be able to represent Barnstable on this. And we would sit down with, with this private entity, and we would look at the permits that were necessary. In parallel with this, we're going to be pursuing, you know, the land that's out there, that's available. And the current, this, this private company is not pursuing that. They will be in support of us securing the land. We would move forward either together, as we establish, you know, what would the capacity be? Where will it be cited? Will it be an add-on to the existing facility or a new facility? You know, how many, how many are opting in? We would have a, a joint permitting process there. If that doesn't work out, the agreement says that we can go it alone out there at that location. I hope that that partnership works. I, I think that it'll be a, a good test to have the existing facility out there, and especially if we become a, a customer in small, there's only about 140,000 gallons of excess capacity. So, it's, it's very, very limited when we're talking about millions, as, as Councilor Raff Griswold said he had alluded to before. So, the agreement allows us to either continue that partnership, and if it cannot, we can proceed, we can separate and then proceed on our own.
I think that issue and the assignment of rights, if we're not happy in the arrangement, are two very key issues for us as we go forward here. So, thank you for your work in that direction.
Yep.
And lastly, I had occasion to meet up with some of the Vineyard Wind people. They're making a round the town tour again. And it appears clear that the ambitious schedule and three and four people digging in different crews in different parts of town seems to have been stalled somewhat by permitting. Do you have any update for us on that regard?
Only that they're predicting we are basically going to be, about the schedule that we had in place, which was to start construction this fall, is bumped 12 months. Otherwise, we're planning the same, that, that, we've already worked it out with DEP, that we remain eligible under the, under our state revolving fund program for that. And it gives us more time, quite honestly, to communicate and plan for, especially the, the major roadways that, that will be involved in this. So, that's, that's the update that I have. But certainly, I can have Vineyard Wind come in at any time. They are, they are always accessible individually or collectively, and certainly to come to this meeting at some point if you would like an update from them.
And thank you very much, and your staff. I think the most important issue of a setback is what does it mean to all the funding as we go forward? And to give notice to the state about the state revolving fund, and have them still agree to ride this out with us, is a great opportunity for us as well.
Yes, it is. And I think, I think it was Councilor Beedenbender who had asked last time, and I had said, and I still hold with this, if next year, this time, this project isn't breaking ground, we will have to go back and, we, we, this does not remove the need to sewer the areas that we are going to service in conjunction with this road construction project. So, I think, you know, maybe six months from now, hopefully, we have a pretty good indication of whether this will proceed or not. And then, we need to have those discussions about, okay, what are we going to do? Because in, in piggybacking on this project, we saved between $3 and $4 million in construction costs on an $8.5 million project. So, that, that has benefited our community beyond just the, the host agreement, and certainly the taxes we'll get on that asset once a private company puts it in the ground. So...
Last question, if I could.
Yes, sir.
One of my favorite questions. How long before we get out there and start to drill and test for water sites, potential wellhead sites?
End of this month, first week of October is what the plan is. I don't, yes. Director Santos Dodge, yes.
What an exciting opportunity.
Yes, sir. We'll let you know.
Great report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselors, we're all set. I would ask the Vice President to move the minutes of September 5th to the table, please.
Yes, I move approval of the Town Council needing minutes dated September 5th, 2019, as written.
I have a first and a second to accept the minutes of September 5th of the council meeting as drafted. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? One abstention, please record that as such. Thank you. Communications, counselors, from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Yes, Councilor Levesque.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to congratulate...
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to congratulate, there was a, there were promotions given out at the Barnstable Police Station this morning, 10:00 AM. It was a memo put out by our Barnstable Police Chief, Matthew Sonnabend, that Sergeant Gretchen Allen and Sergeant Jennifer Ellis were promoted to lieutenant. And Patrol Officer Nathan St. Orange, Patrol Officer Matthew Blondin, Detective Megan Cunningham, Patrol Officer Kevin Fulham, and Patrol Officer Joseph Green were all promoted to sergeant. So, I just wanted to recognize that and congratulate all those that got promoted. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Levesque. Obviously, a big day for them and their families.
Sure.
Counselor Dagwan.
Yes, I just wanted to mention, the BARS Association is having their annual picnic Saturday. And I'm saying this because the association is looking for new members. So, it'd be great for people to come out. It's going to be Saturday, 21st, from 11:00 to 3:00 PM. And they are a really great association. I've joined them several years ago. And what I like about them the best is that they educate. They, I've learned how to, about shellfish and how to, and have had an opportunity to practice the acquisition of shellfish as well. And I think the other thing is that they do fundraising. They do a lot of fundraising for our youth. And one of their fundraising ideas is they do recycling to help fundraise for the youth here in the community. The second thing I want to mention is the Hyannis Open Streets event that's coming up Sunday. It's from 12:00 to 5:00. We're going to have a great day weather-wise. So, come on out. It's a community event. Everything's free. There'll be music. Have lots of activities for your children, grandkids, if you want to bring them down. Bring your animal. Bring your bike. Bring your skateboard. Just come out and engage with the community and just enjoy a little bit of Hyannis Main Street. The Main Street will be shut down, but there are parking spaces along the outside. So, please come down to Hyannis Open Streets, Sunday from between 12:00 and 5:00. Thank you.
Counselor Rapka, set it.
Thank you. I just want to announce that the last hazardous pickup day is the Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00 at the transfer station. Bring your old paints and pesticides, whatever. Thank you.
Counselor Beedenbender.
Thank you, President Crocker. Just wanted to mention that this past Sunday was the GASP, the cycling fundraiser for charities across the Cape. It was, it's a ride, a 50-mile ride from Sandwich to P-Town. And I was a rider. And Counselor Levesque sang the National Anthem. So, thank you very much. But it was a great day. And I brought it up also because I want to thank BPD, who did a great job at some of those critical intersections in keeping the riders, there are about 170 of us, safe. So, thanks again. Every year, the Barnstable Police Department does a fantastic job. I want to mention that on October 5th, from 10:00 to 4:00, and then October 6th, from, October 6th, sorry, from 12:00 noon to 3:00 PM, there's a Cape Cod Solar Tour and Sustainability Fair. It's taking place at the Unitarian Church of Barnstable. So, I encourage anyone who's interested to please attend. Again, it's October 5th and 6th. On the 5th, 10:00 to 4:00. The 6th, 12:00 to 3:00 at the Unitarian Church. Thanks.
Anyone else? I would ask the clerk to acknowledge that Counsel Cullen's joining us. Counsel Cullen did call me and tell me she was attending a Barnstable school meeting tonight. So, congratulations. And I did also get a call from Counselor Snoop that she has family travel. So, she would not be joining us tonight. As an unusual step, if my board would allow me, I would like to invite forward any elected officials who may be in the crowd who want to add something of either their organization or something they've heard tonight, including our elected official from COMM, Colton Crocker, if you'd like to say something about the academy. You got to come to the mic, please. You're not going to get out that easy. Come on, elected official, be it. Wait till you get to the mic, please.
The county's gift.
Colton Crocker.
Colton Crocker.
Provincial Committee Chairman.
Welcome. And thank you all for listening for a minute. The county has gotten, this firefighting training is a mobile vehicle. So, some of the training can be done anywhere on Cape Cod. And obviously, some of it can't be. So, I just wanted to mention that it was a mobile unit, totally mobile.
Yeah, fabulous unit.
Quite a piece of equipment.
Yeah, it is. I had a chance to see it.
We're very lucky.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your service as well. Any other elected officials? Well, I've opened the mic for that situation. Hearing none, I'll close that and move to the orders of the day.
Mr. President, can I just add to my announcement?
Oh, certainly.
I didn't say Veterans Beach for the BARS Association's picnic. So, it's going to be held at Veterans Beach tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dagwan. First order of the day, 2020-018. I'd ask Counselor Tinsley to help me on that, please.
Old business, open a public hearing for item number 2020-018, appropriation and transfer order of $330,400 for the townwide real estate reevaluation update, as written.
I have a first and a second to open the public hearing for 2020-018. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none. For our rationale tonight, we do have Ed O'Neil, a director of assessor, and Mark Millen, our CPA, and our director of finance. Mark, how are you tonight?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, counselors. Mark Millen, Director of Finance, Town of Barnstable. We've come to seek your support tonight for an appropriation to fund a contract with an outside vendor to conduct a townwide property reevaluation. This is a requirement by state law that once every five years, that we have to conduct a townwide reevaluation. Previously, this was required once every three years. But with the Municipal Modernization Act, the requirement was moved to five years. So, that was a couple of years ago. And at around the same time, Director O'Neill joined us. And one of the first things I asked Mr. O'Neill to do was to discuss with me if there was another way that we could perform this work. For the past two decades, we've been doing the reevaluation work in-house with our staff. To Ed's credit, he came up with a reorganization plan in his department, reducing his staff by three people, saving us close to $170,000 a year without laying anybody off. And we knew that this expense, we would farm this expense out to an outside contractor. It's going to happen once every five years. It's not an annual expense. So, the savings to the town over that five-year period is over $500,000 by conducting it this way. And I'd like to thank Ed for all his hard work and coming up with this plan to do this. So, we seek your support for this appropriation. Ed is here to answer any detailed questions you may have. What's involved in a reevaluation, for example? A lot of field work, a lot of data analysis has to be conducted. And again, thank you for your consideration in this.
We are in a public hearing. That is our rationale. Thank you very much. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this matter? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing portion. I have a first and a second to close the public hearing portion of 2020-018. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none. Counselors, what you wish is we have our Director of Assessing and CPA with us. Yes. Vice President.
Ed, could you just tell us the process that will be employed in terms of how folks will have their house reevaluated for future tax rates and tax bills, not rates, but bills, if you will?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, counselors, Madam Clerk. Basically, just to reiterate what Mark had said, we've looked at this over two years and developed a plan. What we have in our office is what they call a CAMA program, Computer Assisted Mass Appraisal System. So, what we basically do, it's a cost-adjusted, it's a cost system adjusted by market trends. So, basically, taking models, a model of, a land model and a building value model, to come up with a total value for the town. And then, we make adjustments with the data that we have. We have an inspection program recurring every year. So, properties are inspected for abatement applications, sales transactions, building permits. So, we do track building characteristics. All the data is on the website for public consumption. So, that data is actually modeled, square footage, condition, lot size. And then, we make adjustments for neighborhoods and villages. It's a kind of a complicated process. And this particular fiscal year, fiscal year 2021, we'll break everything down again. So, right now, what we do in '19 and then fiscal '20, we do a statistical update. Just look at the stats to see what's happening around the town as a whole and also by the neighborhoods. That's kind of a general breakdown of it. Hopefully, that addresses your question.
Follow-up, Mr. Vice President, you also.
I'm just curious, does the trend of the price, sale prices of homes impact what it is that you're evaluating? And how does it do that?
Oh, yeah, of course. So, we're always behind schedule. So, right now, for fiscal '20, we're using 2018 sales. So, we're always behind. And that's, every community is using that same formula. For the revaluation, we'll be using 2019 calendar year. So, sales, building costs, income and expense from properties. We've been building a database for about two years on economic rent schedules. We've been doing that now. So, by the time next year comes along, we'll have some good data.
And if someone disagrees with what your assessment might be recommending, what is their, what is our opportunity to appeal that?
We'll have a public disclosure period prior to the values being, what they'll do is they'll get preliminary certification by the Department of Revenue. We'll put that out there for consumption for folks. They'll take a look at it. They'll give us a call. We may maybe do some hearings on it prior to getting final certification of the values. So, Bureau of Local Assessment will come in, they're the oversight authority, and they'll look at everything that we do. It's a series of analysis, if you will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I like the way you said you're always behind, but because you're on fiscal year, you're always ahead, too.
Correct. We use calendar, right, right. We use calendar year sales.
I know. There's a whole bunch of people think you're ahead of us. Just teasing.
Mr. President, the problem is when the market goes down.
Yes.
So, then we're chasing, you know, and that's happened 2008, '09 and '10, everywhere.
I'm very fortunate. I understand it better than most.
You do. Yes, you do.
Thank you very much. Hearing no further discussions, I'd throw it to the Assistant Town Clerk for a roll call vote.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rapka City?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dagwan, could you assist me, please, with 2020-022?
Yes, Mr. President. Item 2020-022, acceptance of a sewer easement for 100 Merchant's Way Hyannis Mass. This may be acted upon with a roll, has both of here. Roll call or majority vote, which is the.
I have a first and a second. Good evening, Dan. How are you?
Good evening, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works.
May I ask if you would give us a rationale for the sewer easement request?
Yes, sir. As part of a project that's funded by a Mass Works grant and due to begin construction this fall, the Town of Barnstable plans to install sewer infrastructure within Merchant's Way and Business Lane within Independence Park, which are both private roads. Consequently, the town has sought easements from the adjacent property owner, which is Cape Cod Aggregates, to allow the sewer infrastructure to be installed within the private roadway, their property. The town intends to start construction this fall. I mentioned that a moment ago. And this easement is to be required at no cost to the town. Thank you.
Any questions of Dan? I'm sorry? Yes, Vice President.
Thanks, Dan. Just a question. As part of that Mass Works grant, there was also a sidewalk going from the corner of Mary Dunn, Alt. 132.
Yes.
When will that also begin?
That won't start in the fall, but that'll start next, next spring.
In the spring.
That's a follow-on project.
And that's at no cost to the town also?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Counselors, I do have one question myself. As I recall, this is the second time we've talked about roadway systems in the park, easements in the park. I believe we were also asked to get involved with the potential offshore wind farm and our easement and our rights in the road. Is this a common practice for this parcel, which is one of our major taxpayers, our major entities in the village, that we need this kind of assistance, the way the road system is set up at this time?
Yes, yes.
Very good. Well, thank you for working this one out for us.
Yes, sir.
I'd throw it to the Assistant Clerk, Treasurer, for a majority vote, please. Assistant Clerk. I still think I'm at COMM every once in a while.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rapka City?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Counsel Levesque, could you help me, please, with 2020-024?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, majority vote. This is item number 2020-024, supplemental appropriation order in the amount of $15,000 for fiscal year 2020, Planning and Development Department operating budget, as written.
I have a first and a second to open the public hearing on 2024, as written. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none. I would note that we have our Director of Planning and Development and our Town Manager with us tonight to discuss this issue. For the rationale, please.
Thank you. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. This is a request in front of the Town Council tonight for a supplemental appropriation for this fiscal year for $15,000 to support a new permit coordinator position for the Town of Barnstable. This permit coordinator position is something that has been discussed within Town Hall and outside of Town Hall for some time. We feel like it aligns with Town Council's strategic plan priorities aimed at improving economic development, as well as internal and external regulatory process and performance. This position has been a budget priority for the Planning and Development Department for a number of years. We understand that there are many competing priorities out there. But it is a pre-identified priority for, for the Planning and Development Department. And even for some time in different iterations, the Regulatory Services Department before that. It comes before you tonight because it was one of the primary recommendations out of the Economic Development Task Force that you heard from at your last meeting. Again, I think emphasizing that there sort of is an internal recognition that this is a position and a role that remains unfilled, as well as an external recognition from folks who regularly do business in our community, that there is no sort of face of permit coordination over at our 200 Main Street building. So, we seek this appropriation tonight with the goal of making sure that Barnstable is recognized for simple, swift development permits and approvals that promote job growth and tax-based growth in our community. So, just to be very clear on fiscal and staffing impacts, the Planning and Development Department currently has a half-time position. It's a site plan review coordinator position. That position is currently vacant. This position, the permit coordinator position, would be essentially a repurposing of that site plan review coordinator position. So, we would take the duties and responsibilities of our site plan review coordinator, and they would be subsumed into the permit coordinator position. So, this is essentially a new position, but I like to think about it really as enhanced responsibilities of a part-time position that currently exists. So, that, in the Planning and Development budget for this fiscal year, we currently have budgeted $34,000 for the part-time site plan review coordinator position. Again, that position is now vacant. We did put that position out to hire, and we were unable to provide a successful, we were unable to secure a successful candidate into that position. I think it's largely because of the part-time nature of the position. But we have gone out, advertised that position, and it still remains unfilled. Current, future budget impacts for this position would be $73,000. Again, to enhance the position, really give it full, the full duties of a permit coordinator, as opposed to just, what's really an administrative process of running our- as opposed to just, what's really an administrative process of running our site plan review. Again, those duties being incorporated into the permit coordinator position. But, but again, to sort of assume the responsibility of interdepartmental permit coordination over at 200 Main and beyond. So the request tonight is for $15,000, again, with the addition in future fiscal years being $23,000 to, to, to make that a full-time position. Again, that would be staffed at Planning and Development at this point. I do also want to point out that, that I think while the Economic Development Task Force recommended this as a priority action, we did talk a lot about a, a series of accompanying recommendations that aren't related to staffing in terms of just improving internal and external communications, sort of reorganization and rebranding of 200 Main Street that we feel is an effort that we would put in concurrent with bringing this position into our organization.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your work with the committee. We are in a public hearing. Would anyone from the public wish to speak on this issue? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing portion of this meeting. I got a first and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for 2020-24, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions? Hearing none. Councilors, we do have our manager and our Director of Finance. Should you have any questions on this issue? Yes, Councilor Rapkarsetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Elizabeth. Your, the Chair of the Economic Development Task Force suggested that many of the business owners that come in are non-English speaking. Are you proposing to hire someone that is bilingual, trilingual? Or what's, what's the thought about addressing that? That's a question I would have. And right now, so Gloria McPherson is no longer in employment with the town. Wasn't she doing site plan review, or?
So the former site plan review coordinator is Ellen Swinierski. She's still employed with the town, but not in this role anymore. So again, that part-time site plan review coordinator position is currently unfilled, vacant.
So who represents the town during site plan review? Who, who represents your department right now?
So that's, that's an interdepartmental review process that's ultimately administered by the Building Commissioner. At this point, my planning staff, Anna Brigham and Paul Wackrow, are really, have been very generous with their time in helping to, to, to meet the responsibilities of that position. But again, that, you know, that's not their, that's not their primary role. They really are there to, to represent us in a regulatory capacity and, and translate to applicants requirements of the, of the Planning Board and Zoning Board, which are their primary duties.
So you, my first question about being trilingual or bilingual?
Yeah, and, yeah, I, I think that's an excellent idea. We've been working hard to, you know, to translate a lot of our materials and our outreach materials into multiple languages. But that's certainly something we could work with HR to include in a, in a job description.
What, I, you know, I have a hard time imagining someone spending 40 hours a week over at 200 Main Street guiding new businesses in the permitting process. Would this person also assist residents looking for a simple express permit to replace a window in a house? Or what, what do you see this person doing all day long?
So I see this person, and again, I think the, the need that was identified by the task force and continuously seems to be identified by our community is to be the primary point of contact for all commercial permit activity that comes through the point, the town of Barnstable. So if, again, you work in sort of any capacity relative to permitting, that there's a face there at 200 Main Street that provides that initial counter and inquiry support, I imagine them working very closely with our existing economic development staff to develop sort of customized permit pathways and timeframes for individuals. I think that they could take on some of the duties of both existing planning staff and the Building Commissioner, for example, review of business certificates for, for all new businesses that come through. Those need zoning approvals. That's a, you know, that's, that's a duty that really needs a home. Obviously, they would administer our site plan review process. Again, that alone is, is a half-time position right now. And, and I hope to, to enhance that, again, not just to sort of take in applications and, and put people on the docket, but again, to really be that interdepartmental coordinator that helps people understand the requirements of multiple departments and then follows up with them on, on the approvals that they needed and, and to our benefit, compliance with conditions. I think the vision of the Economic Development Committee was really that this person could be someone who, who, you know, you sort of met, who met you at the door and took you all the way through to, to getting your building permit to make sure that, that there was sort of consistency in communication throughout that process. And again, the, the site plan review coordinator, I feel, is a, again, currently half-time position that has a tremendous workload already independently of itself, so that enhanced with these duties, we, you know, we do a tremendous amount of commercial permit activity here in Barnstable.
If I could, one more question. So you, you currently don't have a, a part-timer. So who is, who is doing that work right now? And just your staff, Paul, and, and?
Correct.
Okay. And what are the qualifications of this position that's going to be garnering a pretty good salary?
Right, so again, we do hope to enhance the, the, the duties and responsibilities to be consistent with somebody who would be more of a planner. So again, somebody with those sort of land use planning or academic development type skills, who had a background in real estate or, or again, you know, that, that level of experience as opposed to this being just an administrative position.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Elizabeth. I'm just curious, with the potential increases in the budget for fiscal year 20 and beyond, do you see that being made up in any way, shape, or form by an increase in permitting down the road? Because we have permit hearings, actually permit submissions due from staff like yourselves to, to mark sometime in October. Then there'll be a public hearing in November, I believe, for fees. Do you see that occurring?
I, I think we absolutely need to do a cost-of-service analysis on our site, especially our site plan review. Again, we like to keep those permit fees low because, for, for a lot of applicants, because it's a customer service tool. It's really a way to facilitate people through that process. But for these, for these much larger projects, that, that really get quarterbacked by our staff, I think a reevaluation of, of fees through a cost-of-service analysis is something that we do plan on working on.
So would the increase in the permitting process, did be the potential to have really this be a neutral expense down the road?
Again, without going through that cost-of-service analysis, I couldn't tell you. But if I'm being completely honest, if you look at our Planning and Development Budget relative to our regulatory review planners and our, and our, and that staff, typically, application fees do not cover sort of a full, a full recoup in, in those salaries, so.
Thank you. Councilor Beedenbender?
Apologies, because this is kind of a repetition, but I didn't, I didn't hear your answer regarding the bilingual or trilingual, if that was going to be a requirement of the position.
Sure, I, I would have to work with HR on that, but to the extent we could, could put it as a sort of a priority objective.
It does seem to me like it should be a priority, given our community and, and who's coming in.
Right. And I think that's, you know, that's a really important point, because I think the, some of the idea here is that, again, certainly, we have a, a planning staff, including myself, who are really able and, and available to quarterback very large projects that come through town, you know, ones that end up in front of council regulatory agreements. And we feel that same level of service should be provided to everyone in our community, you know, from the small business all the way up to that big developer who's doing that big project. And, and we really see this as the opportunity to be able to, to level the playing field for everyone.
Also, councilors, thank you. I'd hand it off to the Assistant Town Clerk for a vote.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rapkarsetti?
No.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Eleven, one.
Thank you very much. Councilor Hebert, would you assist me, please, with 2020-026? Page 10, sir. Thank you. Don't worry, they got it set up, so you got.
Thank you.
You got it all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 2020-026, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $283,900 for the purpose of acquiring real property consisting of approximately 0.65 acres of land, more or less impossible, shown on Assessors Map 209 as parcel number 019, to be associated with the construction of a new sewer infrastructure.
I have a first and a second to open a public hearing on 2020-026 as written. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any nay?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think at this point, I would like to recuse myself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service. Please note, too, at this time, Councilor Stein has borrowed off the dais. For the rationale, I'd ask our Director of Public Works, Dan Santos, to also introduce your esteemed staff, and let's hear the rationale.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have with me tonight, to my left, is Griffin Bowden, who's the Town Engineer, and he will be addressing any particular technical questions that are beyond my capability to answer. To his left is Ed O'Neill, as we've seen this, this evening, Director of Assessing, who will be addressing valuation issues and questions that have come up. And obviously, to the end is Mark L., Town Manager, who is going to address use of the Main Street Centerville property in the interim.
Just so we're clear, the rationale is very similar for both 2020-26 and 2020-025. So in an effort, because we have a crowd with us tonight, we're trying to use a uniform approach to answering the questions, because these are, in fact, the way we approach the evaluation. So when he mentions Main Street, this hearing, right this moment that just opened, is for the Route 28 parcel. But all of the data that he's referring to will have a great overlay or, or representation of what his intent would be also when we get to Main Street. So I just want to remind everybody, when I ask you to come forward, it's to speak about Route 28. Please, with the rationale.
Thank you. And we have here, this is our sewer phasing plan, the latest iteration that will be subject to the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. And we're focusing primarily now on these appropriation orders that are addressing areas that are in the red, which is Phase 1, which is projects from zero to 10 years. So when we do sewer projects, sewer expansion projects, there's three major components that we're dealing with. We have to collect the wastewater, we have to treat the wastewater, and then we have to dispose of that treated wastewater, which is also called effluent. What we're concerned with for these appropriations is purchasing properties where we can locate pump stations. Pump stations are part of the collection system. They're a necessary part of the collection system. So effectively, what we do is we, homes through, through gravity pipes will, the wastewater will go out and be collected at a location where there's a pump station. And because the gravity system relies on pipes being put in basically at an angle, because it's, it's not pressurized, and water's going to flow downhill, we have to pitch those pipes. And the reason we have pump stations is because as the farther you are away from the treatment, the deeper you're going. So for example, a typical scenario, in a mile's worth of pipe, you'd be going from zero to 10 to 20 feet, depending on the type of pipe, below ground to serve that last house of that mile furthest away. So that shows that the, the larger the system is, and the further you are away, you're getting very, very deep, and it becomes really very difficult to construct projects that are that deep, particularly piping. So what you do is you have catchment areas, or, or areas, neighborhoods, if you will, that contribute wastewater to a pump station. And what that pump station does is allows you to, under pressure now, have the pipe at a much less depth. So you can see to the right, the homes with the gravity pipe slope down to the pump station, and they're also called sometimes lift stations. And they're lifting, you can see here, the, the wastewater higher, and then it's pumped to either another pumping station, pump station, or ultimately to the treatment plant. So that's the purpose of the pump station. They're absolutely necessary part of the infrastructure for wastewater, because ultimately, most of the wastewater system will be collecting wastewater from residences, you know, more numbers of properties. These will necessarily be in residential areas, without a doubt. They have to be, or we won't be able to collect the wastewater. Currently, we have, on our current system, we have 27 pump stations throughout town. So the reason we're looking at these now and look at these, looking at these property acquisitions is because you have authorized and appropriated funds for us to design projects in that Phase 1 area. And we have final, we've had conceptual design funds and then final design money for both Long Pond Sewer Expansion and the Finney's Lane Sewer Expansion. Both of these designs are underway, and those designs will include designing pump stations for which these orders are the subject of this evening. And then we have conceptual design for Marson's Mills, turning that wastewater treatment plant into a pump station, which will pump ultimately to the pump station that being proposed, proposed here on Route 28. That conceptual design is underway. So again, this request is for appropriation to purchase the properties. These pump stations that will be located on these properties have not been designed. We have tremendous flexibility in the design of pump stations, and I'll show you in a few moments some various opportunities for that. But they haven't been designed. There's flexibility, they can be anything from mostly underground to buildings that you would never have any idea there's any kind of mechanical activity occurring inside. On the Cumberland Farms, Route 28 property, this particular appropriation order, we are seeking tonight later on, the first read for the design funds to do the design for that pump station and the force main that will bring that wastewater to the treatment plant. So relative to construction for these two parcels, when are we thinking about undertaking construction? The Route 28 project, which is the former Cumberland Farms, that's going to be in two to three years for completion. Our hope is that a year from now, we're, we're underway breaking ground for that project. And then for the 310 Main Street, we're estimating that would be in five to 10 years for construction. In the meantime, we would maintain the property as it is. We would not address it, and Manager L. will be specifically talking about that in a few moments. Nearly these properties have zoning issues. The town is exempt from zoning, and this is one of the major reasons why is you need to put infrastructure in, and oftentimes, that, you know, that can't be prohibited via zoning, because we have to put the infrastructure in. And then there are no historic, registered, or identified historic districts or historic property issues. The Route 28 property, there is currently no structure on. It was formerly a gas station. It had underground storage tanks. It's gone through a complete Department of Environmental Protection, Chapter 21E evaluation and cleanup, and that's been certified as clean and available for reuse, for any use, in fact. This is the site. This is from across the street. It's just a vacant property now. Between now and when we would use it, we would clean it up, maybe plant some grass, but again, we're hoping to get there within a year. So we just kind of clean it up, spruce it up a bit. It is in a very visible and important part of our community. So how do we go about selecting sites for pump stations? And it's not, not a particularly complicated process. As I mentioned earlier, we have these areas, neighborhoods, where we, we're looking primarily at topography, or land, the land surface, how that works. Because, again, it's a gravity system, so all these pipes have to run to a common point. And that common point is typically the lowest point in that neighborhood, if we're talking about a neighborhood. So, it's just like water going to a drain, you know, or a sump pump. The water's going to go to that low point, and then you're going to pump it out. And that's exactly what's happening. It's like a sump pump, you know, in a way. So, for the Route 28 Falmouth Road parcel, you can see the yellow line. Yeah, from this line, yellow line on the screen to my left, to the west, all this red, all of that collection will be handled by that pump station at this location. The other thing we look at is when we're evaluating sites in an area. So, we look at low points, and we also look at, first of all, are there any town-owned properties? Are there already municipal properties that could be used? Obviously, comparing that to low point. And the reason you want the low point is because the higher you are, the deeper you have to go. And you really don't want these facilities at 20, or 30, or 40 feet. It gets really very difficult to do construction at that kind of depth, particularly in this environment. And so, here's, here's an example of when we, how we look at the low point. So, this is, the red line, basically, if you were to take a knife and slice Route 28, right down the middle and take away part of it, this is what you'd be looking at. This is a cross section, and you can see, again, on my left, the lowest point, and it's in bold. This is that site. So, this, it turns out, is the lowest point in this area that makes it ideal for a pump station, and it happens to be for sale. So, we were fortunate here. If we had to locate this at a different site that wasn't as low, it just becomes more costly. So, this is, this is a real opportunity for us. And as I mentioned and showed you a few moments ago, this will transmit a tremendous amount of the town's wastewater in the future. 310 Main Street, this is a photograph of the house that's currently there, and undergoing the same value, same analysis. So, we look at the depth, and you can see. So, if you were to take that knife, like slicing a cake, down Finney's Lane, and took away that, kind of the southern part, this is the cross section you'd be looking at. And you can see here that the low point is 310 Main Street. That is the lowest point in this entire area. Once again, it's a property that, turns out, is for sale. So, it's ideally suited for a pump station. Can a pump station go on other properties? Sure. There are no municipal properties there, except Mother's Park. There are other home, the other properties that are there are home sites. And to show you, so, this is the area that we're talking about. This is Main Street. This is Mother's Park here. And this is the location of 310 Main Street. So, all of the properties within this red outline could work for a pump station location. So, that's when I talked about, when we look at the area, where do we need to place it? Then, we look at the topography, we look at what properties are available. So, the property that was available, in this case, was 310 Main Street, and it happens to be the lowest point. This is ideally suited for a pump station. Mother's Park is town-owned. That's something that, in the past, has been considered, back 10 years ago, in 2009. This park was considered for a pump station, and it met with tremendous pushback. The community did not want a pump station in Mother's Park. It's also higher, so it doesn't have, it's not as good a site. And it also has other issues that may or may not be able to be overcome. In particular, because it is a park, any use of this property for other than a park would have to go to the state legislature. And it's, you know, until you go through that process, it's unknown whether that, you could be successful with that. And we're also looking through our legal office for any other impediments or conditions on that property for when it was turned into a park in the town. So, that pump station will serve from Phase One, this red area here. If you look at this yellow line, the whole area that's encumbers by this yellow line, that's the area that ultimately will go through that pump station. But in the Phase One, in the five to 10 years when we construct in this neighborhood, that will be the first flow will be from this area in red to the pump station at 310 Main Street. So, what's, what is a pump station? I talked, talked about it, pumps, it lifts the wastewater, but what's in there? So, if it's a below-ground, or if it's in a building, what there is, is what's called a wet well, which is underground, which is basically a big tank where all this gravity wastewater comes to, and then, where it collects the wastewater. And then, it is pumped from that point into the force main system or the pressurized system back to the wastewater treatment plant. There are two or more pumps, sometimes there's more. And in the, the instance for the Route 28 project pump station, there'd probably be three there. And one of the reasons for that is the amount of wastewater that's being moved. But there's always at least two for redundancy. Obviously, when we're dealing with wastewater, if you have a mechanical problem or any other issue with a pump, you need to have a backup that's immediately available. You have to be able to pump 24/7. And what else is in there are the controlling devices, which is electronics and valves, and variable frequency drives, instrumentation, and all the stuff that we can manage the pump station as part of our entire system. And then, there's also a generator affiliated with these pump stations. And in some cases around town, some cases they're outside. Some cases, we have portables that we bring when we need to them. In another case, in a building, like shown here, the generator can be indoors. So, again, lots of flexibility, lots of, really only limited by our imagination as to what these things look like, and how they're going to fit into our neighborhoods. And as I mentioned again, when I began, many of our neighborhoods in the town of Barnstable, when you look at that phasing map, will be facing these same issues and same questions. And then, the force main, finally, is that pressurized pipe that leaves the pump station and goes to the treatment plant. So, what happens at a pump station? You know, what goes on? What, you know, are people there all the time? Is there noise? So, typically, on a large pump station, which would be the one on Falmouth Road, Route 28, we'd be visiting that pump station daily. So, a pickup truck with personnel from our wastewater treatment plant would go in. They, they'd check the function, check the valves, and make sure it's all operating properly. Smaller pump stations, like the one that would be a 310 Main Street, that would be a weekly visit. So, once a week, someone would drive up in a pickup truck. They'd go in the, in the building or in the, in the control box and make sure it's all operating properly, and there are no problems. The generators, when they're on-site, they're exercised once a week for 10 minutes. As I'm sure you're aware, more and more homeowners are getting generators, and it's really the same thing. Once a week, at a certain time, the generator comes on, operates for 10 minutes. And that's to make sure that when you need it, it's going to work. Noise from pump stations, generally not noisy. Any noise, it's generally contained within the structure, either underground, if it's a subsurface, or a building. And they, they don't make any noise that you would hear out in the street, for example. Pump stations generally don't have odor. It's really all contained. However, the wet well, we do vent through a carbon system. This is just kind of a belt and suspenders approach. They generally don't smell, but we make sure any air that's passed through the system and into the atmosphere is run through a carbon vessel, which eliminates any odors. Finally, the maintenance of the properties is done by our Wastewater Pollution Control Facility crews that we have already. So, winding down here, here's some options for pump stations. These are not in Barnstable. These are just examples of pump stations in other communities. And you can see is kind of every flavor in the middle. You can see these are subsurface pump stations. Even a subsurface pump station has to have something above ground, either a control panel or a generator. And those can typically be hidden behind a fence or shrubbery. So, these sites could be subsurface stations that are landscaped, green space, or they could be a structure that fits into the neighborhood. Now, here's some Barnstable pump stations. Top left, Old Colony Road, that's right, right outside the building here. And you can see that's a wood frame structure. Looks kind of like a barn garage-type facility. Lincoln Road, which is on West Main Street, is a brick structure that was built and designed, so it would blend in with the school that's behind there. Again, we're trying to accommodate that. You can see a very typical on Oak Neck Road, top right. This is a subsurface with some above-ground components. Settlers Lane, looks like a house. And then, SD Avenue, hidden on the bottom left, hidden with screening and bushes. And on the bottom right, Marston's Ave, looks like a little shed. So, these are just some of the examples of the 27 pump stations that we have in town, and how we've addressed them. Again, the point is that it can be whatever the community wants it to be. And we would work with the councilors from the area, with the civic associations, make some proposals, get some input on how they might like to see what's constructed there. And then, we would do some renderings, provide that, and we'd come to some consensus and agreement on what it would look like. So, what I'm going to do now is just specifically address the order for the Falmouth Road site. And the town is proceeding with plans to install sewers and related infrastructure in Centerville. Town engineers have identified its location on Route 28 as an ideal location in the area to support location of underground pumping facilities in the Route 28 corridor. Having this particular site available will significantly aid in the design process for the vital infrastructure that can now be placed on this lot. Direct negotiations with the property owners produced an agreement for damages in eminent domain taking in the amount of $278,900. This comprehensive agreement has been executed by both the owners of the town, subject to the town council approval. The total anticipated cost for this land acquisition, including associated expenses, is $283,900. The acquisition of this parcel of land is essential to the anticipated Centerville Sewer Project. The acquisition of this parcel by eminent domain taking has been thoroughly discussed with the owners and their council, and they have agreed to the comprehensive resolution of their prospective claim for eminent domain damages. Utilizing the eminent domain procedure assures clear title to the property and allows engineering staff to include this parcel in definitive sewer construction planning at a cost that is consistent with current market conditions. Funding for the land acquisition will be provided from the issuance of a bond. There's no fiscal impact to the fiscal year 2020 operating budget. First loan payment on the bond will occur on the fiscal 2021 operating budget. An annual loan payment will be provided from the revenue generated within the Sewer Construction and Private Way Maintenance and Improvement Fund. I'd like to turn it over to Ed O'Neil now to address those questions and concerns related to valuation.
Good evening, Ed.
So, currently, for the fiscal 2019 value on this particular property, we have $203,900 on it. The loan order is for $283,900, and the appraisal came in at $365,000 even. Again, our, as I spoke earlier, the assessments are a little bit behind, so it's assessed less than the proposed loan order and appraisal. The appraisal came in with, you know, more current land sales.
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening, Mark L., Town Manager. On this one, I'll just add that certainly we're, I think, many, if not all of us, are aware of this specific location along Route 28, where Finney's Lane comes into Route 28. This has been a blighted area in our community that certainly, in my multiple roles, I have tried to work with previous owners, and certainly with the town, to address issues such as stores or materials, general conditions, traffic improvement, access egress improvement in that area, as well as, in the prior efforts to do sewer expansion in the town of Barnstable, this was identified as a primary site for a pump station, similar to what we're here before you tonight to plan for in the acquisition of the land, and later ask for a first reading of the design monies. So, not only does this assist with us citing a critical pump station, it allows us to actually have some ancillary sorts of improvements, such as, I think it'll, it will can be, or it can immediately look a lot better, and then, long-term, be maintained in a professional manner by our staff. I think if you look at our facilities, they, they, they are maintained quite well by Water Pollution Control Division or Structures and Grounds. And also, there is an opportunity to look at traffic-related issues at that intersection by the acquisition of this. That's not the primary purpose, but absolutely an opportunity for us. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation.
I do have one question, if I could, while we're in rationale with Griffin. We had some discussion about this particular parcel being key because Route 28 development versus the low point in Finney's Lane versus turning the corner and heading up Great Marsh and so forth. If you could just talk about the key flexibility this particular parcel gives us.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Again, Griffin Bowden, Town Engineer. As, can we go back to the section? So, this section really says it all, as relates to Route 28 from a technical standpoint. As Dan alluded to, our process in trying to cite pump stations, we look at the topography, we try to find areas that are at low points, and then, we look at the big picture, other roads that are going to be feeding into this particular low point. This particular site is located right at the intersection of Finney's Lane, where we've already had, we're already planning on doing a significant expansion. It's at the low point of Route 28 in this general vicinity. As you work your way west, there's another low point that's lower than this, as you can see off to the left of the screen. Well, that will require a future pump station as well, in a future phase of, of, of the sewer expansion. But this, this location will allow us to, to expand up Great Marsh Road and up Finney's Lane. But it's really, it's really key for the westerly expansion. You can't get too far away from the plant without having a pump, a pump station to continue to booster the flow to the plant. And that's what this will allow us to do. Also, the land is of sufficient size to cite a pump station. That will allow us to do that. So, for those reasons, this is why we recommended this location.
Thank you very much. We have voted to go into a public hearing, and this is specifically on 1456 Falmouth Road, Map 209, Parcel 019. In the public hearing, does anyone from the public wish to be heard on this parcel of land? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing for 2020-026. Must come forward, sir. Take your time, please.
Turn the mic off. Do you really have to hear me?
Yes.
My name is Joe Butera. Years and years ago, I was in Winter Street in Hyannis, but that turned into such a lovely neighborhood, all of us left and went to other areas of the Cape. And we chose Centerville on Main Street. I live in a 1720 house. It's a nice little old house, and it's a lovely neighborhood. Now, in reference to this gas station, which has been a disaster since I've lived there for over 50 years, it's never worked for anything. And as far as the pump station going in there, I don't have a problem with it. My only concern is, why don't they make the pump station large enough? Why do we have to have one? Why can't that house everything? Is your design not up to par? You can't figure out how to make this larger, to, to hold a larger capacity? Because I look down by Four Seas, that's the lowest place around. And if you're looking for low life, excuse me, low area, I mean, I didn't mean that at all, because I love Four Seas. But I do joke. at all, because I love Four Seas, but I do joke. That would be a wonderful place, and that's low. But this area here, this, I don't know why, you know, make it twice as big, three times as big, and put the capacity there. We're talking a quarter of a mile from Centerville to Main Street to that. And they kind of go in conjunction here, even though we're talking about that one parcel. I mean, I don't see why you need two of them. And this is Long Pond in the first place, we're trying to, am I correct? This is what we're really dealing with up front. Because I was under the impression we're trying to clean up the waterways, Long Pond, Quocket Lake, things like that. Main Street in Centerville, I mean, I've got a septic system because I put an addition on it. Well, you had, what I went through for that sector, to get this addition on, this 1720 house, was amazing. And now you're going to put up, I've seen a little outhouse it looked like up there, I've seen a brick structure, and they don't have anything in common with what I see on Main Street in Centerville, which is an historic district mentally to everyone who lives there. Now, it may not be on that particular house, but the rest of it...
Let's keep your comments to Route 28, sir.
Okay. All right, I apologize. I apologize. You're right. I do apologize for that. But I don't see why, you know, with all the ingenious things that we have going here and such smart people in today's society, and the education from MIT that we could draw upon, why we couldn't have that one station on 28 contain everything? I mean, it seems ridiculous. Now you're talking about putting another one at that next level. I mean, what are we going to have, every half mile, we're going to have a pump station? No, I live in the city of Boston, too. I have never seen a pump station. And that suicidalism is older than we are. And I have never seen a pump station anywhere. Dorchester, anywhere you go, where's the pump station? What is with this pump station stuff? I mean, figure it out. There's got to be another way of doing this. I think we're shooting from the hip. Oh, let's, we haven't done anything in 50 years and we're lazy, and now everyone's yelling at us, so let's get it done now. Shoot from the hip, let's go. And I don't think it's the correct way to approach this at all. I think we need a lot more planning and not buy a piece of land just because it's for sale. And oh, we can use it in the future in 10 years from now. Wait, I'll talk further on the other one later. Thank you very much.
I can hardly wait. Mr. Butera, I know you very well, so I just, and I know you can read, so I just want to warn you that the next time. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing no more public comment, I'd make, take a motion to close the public hearing portion of 2020-26. I got a first and a second to close the public hearing portion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Councilors, any questions of our esteemed panel? Yes, Councilor Beeden, Banda.
Mr. Bowden, would you please just address that concern as to why everything can't be lumped into that one spot?
So this section here through Finney's Lane explains that, explains that exact question. So on the right side of the section, you can see it says Falmouth Road, Route 28. That's almost exactly where this particular parcel in question is. It's about 25 feet in elevation higher than where 310 Main Street is and where the low point in Finney's Lane is. In order to make sewage go by gravity to that parcel, we would have to be 35 to 40 feet deep, which is extremely cost prohibitive, and it's also extremely difficult to do. We would be talking about putting a trench across Route 28 that's about 40 feet deep.
Follow-up, counselor?
If you were to do that, what, you said it would be extremely expensive, so just give, give us an estimation of how much, five times, 10 times, 20 times? Because this, obviously, this is borne by the residents of the town. We will be paying for this, so.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So more so than the cost, it's the constructability concerns. Cost-wise, three, five times more. I don't know the exact number, to be completely honest with you. But the biggest, it's the constructability issues. We're working in sand here on Cape Cod. You can't keep that stable. You would have to, you'd be talking about a mass of sheet piles, similar to constructing large buildings. Also, you'd be working in 20 to 30 feet of groundwater as well that you'd have to pump out, and you'd have to find a place to pump that because of the proximity to the ponds. The biggest thing here and the biggest takeaway is doing that would be a construct, it's constructability issues. Quite frankly, it's not feasible.
Counselors, yes, Counselor Rap Kersetti.
Thank you. The, this was a site of a gas station previously, and there was a 21E done on it. To what depth was that 21E done? And do you expect to have to go any further?
The DEP, based on that 20E, has cleared that site for any use, so it's not a matter of depth. Although, we'll be prepared that if we're constructing and, you know, we hit something, we'll deal with it. But, you know, from everything I've seen and reviewed, the documents I've reviewed, and I've been in that business and been in this business for a long time, I am completely comfortable with that 21E and what it, the work they did and for us proceeding.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Cullen?
Yes, I just, could either Dan or Mark Els speak to the shoot-from-the-hip mentality? Because, you know, for years, I've been sitting through these comprehensive wastewater planning meetings, listening to the plans, watching the different areas, what's up between 1 and 10, 10 and 20. This is not a shoot-from-the-hip proposition. This is something that the town has to do. We have to sewer. We have to sewer. And I just, I just want everybody to understand that this is part of our overall economic health that we're talking about. If we don't have, like with Quocket next year, or 10 years from now, because of cyanobacteria and because we haven't treated the water the way we should, then we're really going to be, really going to lose the property value. We're really going to be in a spot. So for me, I just, I just want everyone in the room to understand how much planning has gone into this. Because I understand when things happen in your neighborhood and it's not exactly what you're expecting, it's not the cute family of four, it's a pump station that looks like it might house a family of four maybe, or whatever. I'd understand that it jars you a little bit, but the alternative, you know, is not pretty. So just, if you could speak to how long you've been planning, that'd be great.
Sure. Well, we've been planning for wastewater in Barnstable for many decades. This is just the latest iteration of that work. And since 2015, we've been working full-time on wastewater planning for the community to solve all of the issues that septic systems primarily create. And that being the degradation of our coastal water bodies and our ponds, our drinking water. And that's, that's why we have to sewer and why we have to treat wastewater, to protect all of these resources. To the other issue, I won't spend a lot of time, other than in our department, in Public Works, we have five registered professional engineers. We don't shoot from the hip. We are trained in ethics and professionalism to provide the best product that we can to our customer, whoever that may be.
Thank you.
Counselor Neary?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan. I have just a couple of questions. In the prior description of this particular facility, you indicated that it's going to be handling a relatively, it's going to be a large amount of water, a large amount of sewer. How big do you anticipate this structure would have to be, or let's call it the pad that this thing would reside on?
We're talking again on 1456 Falmouth Road.
Correct, yeah, Route 28.
So we have a pump station on West Main Street at Lincoln Road, that one in the top center. It'd be smaller than that. So that looks like about 20 by 40.
And is the generator housed inside that building as well, in terms of noise and...
Yes.
Okay. The second question I have is, how many pump stations do you anticipate will be required in the town to complete, say, Phase 1 of our comprehensive wastewater treatment?
We haven't done the design enough to know that. I will, I guess, we have 27 now, we'll probably have that many more. So it's not three or four. It's not 100, but there'll be, there'll be many more.
If I could add, and it is a follow-up to an earlier question, planning, I've spent three decades on various focuses relevant to protecting our environment, supporting our neighborhood, supporting business in Barnstable with appropriate infrastructure. So I think that it, there is a longstanding plan for this specific site to be a key location in sewer expansion in the community. And so I feel confident as your town manager to recommend to you that this is the best site to site that pump station. And I would hope that, I would hope that the most recent information, supported by certainly the last two facility plans, I believe, made similar recommendations, and therefore, we should proceed with this acquisition. Thank you.
Counselors, any further questions? Yes, Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Part of the motivation for what we're doing, of course, is we've known that this day was going to arrive. You can't have the expansion that we've had and the extreme number of septic systems and even Title V's and everything else. So when the Conservation Law Foundation puts suit against all of Cape Cod, we're not the only one facing this. Every day, you can read in the paper, whether it's Howard, or Chatham, or Provincetown, or Truro, doesn't matter which community, we're all under the same mandate to correct the problem. The problem is, is that our clean water and our ponds and our estuaries and even the ocean is being affected by how we live here. So if we don't fix this, other authorities above us will take over. We're dealing with the EPA, as well as the DEP, as well as other mandatory groups. So all that aside, when we're faced with having to close some ponds and close some swimming areas and our fish being endangered, we don't have any choice but to move forward on this at extreme cost. But we want to do it with the best knowledge, best methods, and do the best job we possibly can. So I appreciate the tremendous work that you all are doing in order to put this, this together. And I hope that the public can understand, if we lose the quality of our environment, there's no doubt that our house values are going to go south in big time, very quickly. So the only way to save our environment and save the quality of our life here on Cape Cod is to proceed with due diligence on the projects that we're doing. So, thank you.
Counselors? Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, just wanted to speak to the issue of planning and the comment about shooting from the hip and suggesting that this has been a process that's been done willy-nilly. Four years ago, when I was the liaison to the Water Resources Advisory Committee, this process began, and it had begun actually before that. So I really applaud and commend the staff of the DPW who have been working tirelessly to make, if you will, these plans the most consistent so that, as Counselor Hebert has suggested, the 208 plan that we're under the Conservation Law challenge to correct and to, and to move forward, that we're able to do it. From the conversation I'm hearing, there really is not an alternative location. And if we don't do it, we have problems legally down the road. But more importantly, this has been a very well thought-out, very well-planned, long-time engineering study and really doing the modeling, upset in many, many meetings. So to think that this was done overnight is just not the case.
Counselors, we all set? Hearing no further discussion, I would move it to our assistant clerk for a vote.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Kersetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Mender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Rap Kersetti, could you assist me, please, with 2025?
Under old business, public hearing, roll call, two-thirds vote. Item 2020-025, appropriation loan order in the amount of $549,000 for the purpose of acquiring real property consisting of approximately .32 acres of land, 32 out of 100, more or less, in Barnstable, shown on assessor's map 208 as parcel 048, to be associated with the construction of a new sewer infrastructure, as written.
I have a first and a second to go on a public meeting for 2020-025. All those in favor of opening a public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? And please note, Counselor Levesque is off the dais. And Counselor Hebert? Tinsley voted before he left, though, so we did have, we had quorum at that time. So we can go into a rationale, but I need to have just a moment of everyone's attention, if I could. We're going to do this in a very orderly way. Anybody who wants to speak will have an opportunity. That's the good news, I promise. What you're going to find, though, is there are five, 10, 15 items. And if those five or 10 items keep coming up, please don't be afraid to come forward and voice your concern or your opposition based on a unit. But we should be cautious of everyone's time as well. You've been very grateful, very gracious in riding the pine, but that's the way this business goes with us. So I would just caution you that at some point, if you would like to come forward and say, "I object to the issue for historic," or whatever, and step away, that's okay. Everybody who comes forward must make their presence known and their address. And we go through a card process. So nobody has more than three minutes, and there are no applause. So our assistant to the council will give you a 15-second notice that your three minutes is arriving. I also will slide my card up, and we'll ask you to try to wrap up within that timeframe. So please, I'm, it's my intention that everybody who wants to speak, speak tonight. So I wouldn't invite you here unless I was ready. We may have to take a little restroom break at some point, but we'll play that as we go. So back to the rationale portion before we go to the public comment area. Anything we'd like to add now that we're specifically on the Main Street property?
Yes. Majority of the rationale was contained in the previous presentation. However, more specifically, the town is proceeding with plans to install sewers and related infrastructure in Centerville. The owners of a parcel located at 310 Main Street, Centerville, have listed it for sale, and town engineers have identified its topography as the ideal low point in the area to support location of underground pumping facilities. Having this site available will significantly reduce the need for and costs of infrastructure improvements that would otherwise be required to support sewers in the village. Direct negotiations with the property owners produced an agreement for damages in eminent domain taking in the amount of $544,000. This comprehensive agreement has been executed by both the owners in the town, subject to town council approval. The total anticipated cost for this land acquisition, including associated expenses, is $549,000. The acquisition of a parcel of land is essential to the anticipated Centerville sewer project. This acquisition of this parcel by eminent domain taking has been thoroughly discussed with the owners and their council, and they have agreed to the comprehensive resolution of their prospective claim for eminent domain damages. Utilizing the eminent domain procedures will assure clear title to the property and allow engineering staff to include this parcel in definitive sewer construction planning. Funding for the land acquisition will be provided from the issuance of a bond. There will be no fiscal impact to the fiscal year 2020 operating budget as a result of this action. The first loan payment on the bond will occur in the fiscal year 2020 operating budget. Annual loan payment will be provided from the revenue generated within the sewer construction and private way maintenance and improvement fund and will be included in the fiscal year 2021 operating budget. I'll turn it over first to Mr. O'Neill, who will address the valuation issues, and then Manager Els to address the continued use of the property for the period prior to us utilizing it for a pump station.
Thank you, Dan. The property on 310 Main Street in Centerville, we currently have it assessed at 372,200. Again, that's based on market data from a couple of years ago. So the appraisal that was just done in August 30th, 2019, used 2019 sales. So the appraisal that was just done in August 30th, 2019, used 2019 sales, so more current sales to come up with. The appraisal of 546, and the loan order before us tonight is 549.
Good evening, Mark Els. Relative to, and Director Santos earlier explained that though the acquisition and the vote for acquiring this parcel is this evening, there are years potentially before we would go forward with what we design relative to a pump station on that location. In the interim period, it would be maintained, the property would be maintained, consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. It would be done by, through the Department of Public Works. And we would also like to see the property itself occupied during that period, consistent with the neighborhood. I certainly have reached out to specifically AmeriCorps, and they are interested in occupying. That's one potential opportunity for us. So the intent is not to run a municipal operation out of there in the interim. It is not to allow the property to sit and deteriorate over time. The intent would be that the neighborhood would not see a difference in that property. The true long-term intent, even when it transfers from a property where someone lives to a property that would occupy the apparatus that Director Santos has described relevant to sewer expansion, would be the same. It would blend in with our neighborhood and be consistent with our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for the rationale. I'll now open it to the public portion. What I'm gonna ask the public to do is to fill in between the two aisles with anybody who's interested in coming forward. Please don't be afraid to get in line, stand up, stretch your feet, get yourself ready. But I'd like anybody interested in coming forward to feel free to fill the middle section, and we'll have an orderly process. Dave, you're fine there, right there, you want to be number one. And we'll just have an orderly process going through. And again, no applause, and we're just here to hear you out. And thank you for riding it out with us, and thank you for coming in.
Good evening, Mr. President and Town Council. My name is David Seroe. I live at 163 Turn Lane in Centerville, Mass. I am the president of the Centerville Civic Association. And this matter was just brought to my attention two days ago. And we had a summer meeting back in August where we talked about the situation with Town Sewer, but I don't recall anything being mentioned about 310 Main Street. I agree 100% with the comments that Mr. Consulate Hebert made. This is, has to be done, it's gonna get done. But I think of what I've heard over the past couple of days from the residents of Centerville, we would just like an opportunity to get a little bit more educated and discuss this matter. And as Mr. Santos said, even in his comments about willingness to work with the associations and with Town Council from the areas, I think you need to put some type of procedure in place as to, once you locate a potential site for a pump station within a residential area, that you're gonna have a procedure that you're gonna, first of all, maybe reach out to the various association to get them, give them an opportunity to speak about it so that when it comes here before Town Council, you don't have this waiting for you. This should be, this should have already happened in Centerville. This should have happened at one of our meetings at the Centerville Civic Association, where we had an opportunity to discuss the matter. Then, when it comes to Town Council, you don't have a room full of people, you have two or three people that are gonna come up, express their comments, express their concerns, express their likes, express their dislikes. So again, on behalf of the Centerville Civic Association, I am asking Town Council to postpone this meeting, postpone this vote for one month. And I will guarantee you that I would reach out to Mr. Santos and our counselors to schedule a one meeting, two meetings, whatever it's gonna take between now and your next meeting, to sit down in an orderly manner, talk about this, and to come up with some type of, hopefully, agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please announce who you are and what your home addresses, please.
My name is Beth Herrick, 21 Wilton Drive in Centerville. I'd like to look again at some of the pictures that were put up. One of the main criteria that you use is depth, I understand. And looking at that graphic picture of the depth of the Main Street property versus the Mother's Park, I'd like to know what the difference is in the depth between those properties, and if, in fact, that's statistically significant, and if it would be prohibitive in terms of building. Because although there was a lot of resistance to that property in the past, I'm sure most people would agree that it would be the lesser of a lot of evils, and I suspect it wouldn't be prohibitive. Additionally, I'd like to say that it sounds like the size of the amount of water that this property would service is significantly less than that of the Route 28 property for a much greater cost. And it doesn't seem to me that that's good use of towns' resources. And if we're not talking about building on this for two to three years, why we need to vote on this tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. We haven't had a chance yet to talk about how public comment goes. There is no give and take on public comment. We'll try to have some of our panel make notes, and when it comes back to the council, we'll try, the council usually tries to get answers for you as well. So it can't be a give and take, but please, come forward.
Hi, I'm Wendy Crocker, and this is my husband, Jeff Peacock.
32 Wilton Drive.
Which has been our home for 10 years. Our neighborhood is reminiscent of a simpler time, where neighbors were friendly, were in walking distance of a beautiful park, an elementary school, a library, an 1856 penny candy store. To us, it was truly the quintessential place to raise our family. Needless to say, proposing a housing unit and a septic pump station at the entrance to our neighborhood is disconcerting. We are here tonight to voice our opposition to the proposed pump station at 310 Main Street in Centerville. The lack of transparency and taking and overpaying for a single-family home in our historic community for public use sets an alarming precedent for the town of Barnstable. The hasty action of the town and untimely notification of the intent is unacceptable and has created a feeling of mistrust. This process needs to be slowed down. You talk over and over again about planning. How come we, the residents of Wilton Drive, did not receive notification until Friday the 13th? The search for a more suitable and cost-effective alternative needs to be pursued. We stand with our neighbors in Centerville and advocate on behalf of the taxpayers in the town of Barnstable and say no to the proposed pump station at 310 Main Street in Centerville. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bill Robbins. I live at 320 Main Street. My wife, Mary, and I are the closest abutters to the property. And thank you for everything you do, by the way. It's a tough job, and we appreciate it. Anyway, we have owned the property for 34 years there. We raised four children there, sent them off to college. Now, in the last few years, we've finally done a lot of the things to our home that we've wanted to do, improving it. And we are concerned about the property values. I'm being told it doesn't affect it. However, we are the closest abutters to it, and it does have a stigma to it, having it so close to your home. It may not smell, it may not be visible, it'll be hidden, but it's still there. Let's see. To most people, their home is their single largest investment in their life. We are concerned about our property value. And we're not planning on selling, but in the future, if we wanted to, how is it gonna affect us? We all understand the need for this. I grew up swimming in Wequocket Lake, swimming in Long Pond, and it's a disgrace what's happened to it. And there's no question, we have to do something about it, and no one denies that. But we just think it's the wrong location for the project, that hopefully a less intrusive place can be found, maybe at a less price than that, to save the taxpayers some money. I just think, right at this point, it's been looked at as a strictly business and an engineering decision without letting the public be involved in it whatsoever. And all we are asking you is go back to the planning stage, take a step back, and see if there are any other options before you make a decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President and the rest of the council. My name is Mark Hanson. I live at 51 Joyce Anne Road in Centerville. In full disclosure, I sit on the town's zoning board of appeals. Tonight, I'm speaking just as a resident. I know in that capacity, sometimes it's hard, you know, to sit on the other side of the desk, and it's hard to separate emotion sometimes from practicality. And one of the things that I think in this particular area, when we're speaking about this particular parcel, is that when we looked at some of the examples that were given on the prompter, is that, you know, this is such a, it's a very, very quiet area. And I have never known, in my experience, for machinery to not produce low-pitch hums, things like that, that if you're passing, yes, you know, we say from the street, you can't hear things. But I think a concern may be, when your head hits that pillow, what are you hearing? What are the things that might be, you know, the people that purchased in this area and that live in this area have a certain expectation as to their ability to enjoy their property. We look at those things, obviously, as a council, you know, when we propose anything in front of that. My other concern is that I believe that the town, up to this point, has shown really no ability to create a structure that is within the keeping of any particular area. I mean, there were some examples there, and no disrespect to those presenting, but I feel that an architect or somebody, you know, regardless of where this ends up, that the council, you know, at least looks at having an architect in the mix, or several, because I don't believe that they spend the money to make these truly structures that nobody will notice. I have concerns about that, you know, being someone that builds, someone that develops, I'm sensitive to it. It's like they say, when you hear about affordable housing, nobody, it's not that anybody is against affordable housing, they're against ugly affordable housing. And so when we think about these things and the placement of this, I do believe it's moving quickly. I don't wanna, you know, say what everybody else has been saying, but I do believe that it should be a process that's slowed, if we're talking a three- to five-year window. Yes, it's a small area. There are some properties there that, quite honestly, not a lot, but there are a few derelict properties there that if it absolutely had to go there, I know it's not for sale, but have other properties been approached that could be for sale, and maybe there's a savings there? Just something, more points for the council to think about when it does approach this. But I would be, you know, I would urge the council to either delay a vote on this or to vote no to this particular property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Dagel, 359 Main Street, Centerville. I've lived there for 35 years. If Barnstable had a set of crown jewels, this would be one jewel in the crown. It does not, they don't make any more Main Street Centivals. And you, as the keeper of that crown, should do everything impossible to see that whatever's done on Main Street Centerville, you maintain that integrity. It's just never gonna come back like this. With all deference to Consulate Hebert's statements, it's clearly an issue that has to be addressed. But I'd say to you two things. Be skeptical. Don't just take the advice of the engineering's point. Ask questions. Find out if there's another area that could be, that would work. Don't just ask probing questions, look, examine, ask those questions. Second, if this is determined to be the site that it has to be, make it look as if it blends in the neighborhood. Those pictures of the brick buildings and those little tool sheds, they're not in keeping with Main Street Centerville. Make it a priority. If you're gonna spend $589,000 buying this property, if that's what it comes to be, do it, do something. Make the Main Street predilect proud of what happened there. Make the result either release as good or better than what it is right now. Again, alls I can say to you is, this is some, this is a piece of property in Barnstable that just needs to be protected. There's nothing like it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Please tell us your name and your address.
Donald Levine, 64 Wilton Drive, Centerville. We've lived there for 22 years. I first became aware of the plan just a few days ago from neighbors. Apparently, we were not considered to be abutters or affected abutters, although we only live five houses away. When I need to give someone directions, I would say, "Go buy Four Seas Ice Cream, turn the corner, go by the Library, the Country Store, go by the Historical Society, keep driving through Historic Centerville, go past the beautiful homes, the white picket fences, the white houses, take a left at the Sorage Pump Station onto Wilton Drive." I'd say we are tremendously affected. There is, in fact, noise from generators. There is possible odor, there is possible mechanical issues, there's desecration of our beautiful neighborhood, and there is absolutely direct financial loss and more. It says in a letter that I saw that there were direct negotiations. I'd like to know who conducted those direct negotiations. I'd like to know if they were in public or if they were in private. I'd also like to know if you did it in a traditional sense, if there was an offer to buy the property and then a purchase and sales agreement? Or was it something else that we are unaware of, because we have no knowledge? It next states that the house would be managed as a housing unit. I'd like to know who's gonna manage a single-family home, and if you've done that before with the DPW. I'd like to know how long the house would be vacant. Who's gonna be the landlord of this property? Is it move-in ready? Are you gonna spend more for renters? Do you need to do kitchens, appliances, and other updates to be able to rent the house? I next understand that this was negotiated in a friendly manner. I'd say it was a very friendly manner, because the asking price was given at $549,000 when the house has been on the market for over a year. In summary, only a few of us as abutters got this letter a week ago, and it says that you've already negotiated and entered into some sort of agreement for land in a single-family home in the historic area of Centerville, for a future project that may happen within the next 10 years. I'd like to know, with respect to the engineer, were there other ideal locations identified? Or even just maybe other locations? Is this the only location that would work for this future plan, and there's no other location that could work? Ha, I guess we're just lucky. This house happened to be for sale, and I guess you have to say, "This is where we'd have to do it." Otherwise, you'd have to start exercising eminent domain powers, not only for this house, because that's apparently what you've done post-purchase and sales, but you'd be looking at other homes for eminent domain powers, and I guess we all should start thinking about what would be happening. I want to be clear, we support the mission for wastewater management, and it must be addressed and corrected, and I'm all on board with that. I'm not saying, "Don't do it in my backyard." I'm really saying, I think you're rushing inappropriately to purchase land in a single-family home on Main Street Centerville without exploring other appropriate areas, like Mother's Park and others. I urge you to slow down, evaluate, and be fiscally prudent as you proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Counselors. Brian Covell, 41 Wilton Drive, Centerville. I can echo, but everyone has said so far, so I'll be real brief. I stayed in Provincetown, like, several years ago in a hotel, and they had a vacuum system for a pump. Is that viable, to have a vacuum system, rather than the pumps?
We can't do a give and take, unfortunately.
Okay. I'm echoing everyone else, and please don't vote tonight. Give us a chance to regroup. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sue Roebach, and I live at 432 Main Street in Centerville. Most of the people, or a lot of the people here, are in the immediate vicinity of this house. But I am here to tell you that people down the street are concerned... But I am here to tell you that people down the street are concerned about this also. Main Street Centerville is a densely populated historic area, which is beloved by its residents and lots of people who don't even live here, plus other people in Barnstable. And I understand how important it is that we get started on our new wastewater infrastructure. I'm really glad that it's going to be happening. But you all have been working on this for many years, and you've heard many presentations on it. I can remember working on a project with the DPW, like, 20 years ago, on wastewater planning. So it's been going on for a long time. So to you, the fact that this is happening in Long Pond, the fact that it's happening all down 28, and that you might buy a property, is not a surprise, I suppose. But to us, it is a surprise. I'm really concerned that people only found out about this at the very last minute, thanks to a flyer that a resident sent out, and also thanks to Councilor Beedenbender, who sent something out to everybody. It just seems, as other people have said, it seems very rushed. A lot of people aren't able to be here this evening. A lot of people don't understand what's happening, what's going to be happening in Centerville or in the whole town, and/or don't know anything about it. I'm glad you're going to be going out to educate the community, but I'm really surprised that you would be going ahead with this before that happened. So I had some specific questions, and many of them have been answered. But one of them is, would the neighbors of the pumping station be using the sewer connection that it pumps to? And what, what will the cost to them be? If they are not going to be using it, when would they be getting sewers, and when will the rest of us be getting sewers, the rest of Centerville Village? And I was kind of given to understand, from one of the things that somebody said, was that this would be the only pumping station in the village of Centerville. Is that really the case? What are the downsides of having the station near your house? And I, you know, I hear that people are really concerned about odor, noise, and property devaluation. If any of those things happen, what's the recourse if there are, you know, if those things happen, or if there are other problems? I've listened to the presentation tonight, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak and ask questions. But I would like to echo what David Soreau and others have said. I think you really need to slow this process down, and so that more people in the village can be clear on what's happening all over with the whole sewer, the whole sewer ring project, and what's happening in our village, and be able to ask questions and have them answered directly, and ask follow-up questions, that, you know, you need to hold one or more community meetings, and the Civic Association has certainly volunteered to do that. I think that would be good for the village, and I think it would be good for you, too, because it would help to establish a process where area residents are educated about what's going to happen before votes like this, that are obviously really concerning to people and controversial, go ahead without people having the opportunity to know about it ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, again, so everyone can speak, we're using the COD system, so you get a notice of your last 15 seconds. So please make an attempt to wrap up when the notice comes up. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Kelly Barrett. My husband and I live at 311 Main Street, directly across from 310 Main Street. The charming house with the white picket fence is the first thing we see when we pull out of our driveway. Several years ago, when we purchased our house at 311 Main Street, we did an extensive renovation to turn it back to a single-family residence from an illegal two-family. During this time, we had numerous inspections by the town to make sure we were up to code and that the home was indeed turned back to a single family. So imagine our shock and horror when a neighbor informed us that the town was purchasing 310 Main Street to turn it into a sewer pump station. Although we live directly across the street from the property, we received no official notice from the town that this was in the works. 310 Main Street has been identified by town engineers as a, quote, "ideal location for the pump station." I'm still trying to wrap my head around that logic. The house at 310 Main Street, in the corner of Wilton Drive, is located on a busy fare through and sits in a densely packed residential neighborhood. Part of Main Street is in a nationally recognized historic district, and the houses along Main Street reflect this historic character of Centerville Village. The pump station on SD Ave in Hyannis, the handout that I gave everyone, has been used as an example of an unobtrusive pump station in a residential neighborhood. If you look at the Google Map printout, you will see the pump station on SD is surrounded by woods on three sides and has only one house next door. SD Ave is a very quiet road, nothing like busy Main Street. If you look at the Google Map of 310 Main Street, you will see the house is surrounded by neighborhoods, with Wilton Drive behind it and Briar Cliff Lane in front of it. These two locations could not be more different. In notes from the September 5th council meeting, in the background material, it states, quote, "Having this site available will significantly reduce the needs for and cost of infrastructure improvements that would otherwise be required to support sewers in the village." What this means to me is that you're deciding to locate the pump at 310 Main Street as a cost-saving measure, when there might be other alternatives available. In all reality, our neighborhood is going to pay the price. You can't put lipstick on a sewer pump station. This is an affront to all the neighbors who keep their homes up to the highest standards. This is an infringement on our property rights, as proximity to the pump station will decrease our property values. The pump is a potentially safety hazard, as it, if it malfunctions, and noise from the generator will disrupt our neighborhood. This is a tremendous waste of taxpayer dollars, spending over half a million dollars on a house that will be torn down, instead of identifying a less costly alternative. 310 Main Street is not an ideal location for a sewer pump. Please go back and work with the town engineers to find an appropriate spot for the sewer pump that does not disrupt our residential neighborhood and tear the historic fabric of Centerville Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward and announce yourself.
Good evening. Ralph Baird, 317 Main Street. Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to talk to you tonight. We do appreciate that. We also appreciate everything you've said about the need to move forward and improve water management, wastewater management. In the town, none of us are against that. I share everyone's concerns, I'm not going to reiterate everything they said, but, you know, for me, I do want to just hit on a couple of them again. A week ago, none of us knew anything about this. Now we stand here tonight, we've all scrambled to try to learn something about it in the last week. This presentation was helpful. I personally need a lot more. I don't feel like we got the answers that we need. I echo everyone's suggestion to slow down, postpone this vote, take some more time. I suggest to you, and you go through this again, and you will, because you're going to have to do this in other neighborhoods over the next 30 years, don't make your decision, take a vote, buy a property, and then hold a public hearing. You talk to the neighbors, you know, that's great, they're gone. I mean, you talk to the owners of this property and the other ones, what do they care? They're gone. You should have talked to the neighbors, too. And I, and I suggest you do that the next time you go through this. My concern is this is a foregone conclusion, and you've already made up your mind, you're already moving forward with it, and we can't change your mind, and I'm disappointed in that. I don't think that's how, you know, this process should unfold. I know that you've done a lot of planning, but it's the execution of it that concerns me and a lot of other people in this room. I just, I think you need to justify your decision for all of the people that are here tonight, more than you have so far. I don't understand what else you looked at, other than the, you know, you looked at the lowest point in the area that was for sale. Is that a strategy going forward? You're just going to buy the lowest point that's for sale, and if it's, like Joey said earlier, it's a quarter mile from the other one, you'll put in, you know, two, a quarter mile apart, maybe the next one's four miles away, and the next one's seven miles away? Seems like there needs to be, you know, a strategy here, you know, for the whole town. And I don't understand, you know, just buying a property and saying, we're going to put it there because it was available. There's got to be another way. So I would just leave you with that. Do appreciate the opportunity, but hope you'll reconsider. Thank you.
Please come forward and announce yourself.
Nick and Barbara Verutzes, 22 Wilton Drive. Again, we just want to echo a lot of the past speakers and the points that they brought up. One key thing that we do want to stress is that we acknowledge the planning, we all acknowledge the environmental benefits. However, the plan hasn't been approved. It's not draft-ready, it's not review-ready, it hasn't gone to DEP. What is the rush? You have a document that could be thrown out in less than a month, and we're buying property, we're doing this, we're going to put in a housing unit. It makes no sense. We weren't informed of this, you know, up until last Friday. Sufficient time was not provided. And I think it just does not make sense in a densely populated area, historic area on Main Street.
I just have, I echo some of the same sentiments that were here, and I don't disagree that we, we do need to solve the wastewater problem. But the town has the ability to exercise eminent domain at any time it wants to, on any property it wants to. And this, this phase of the development is not happening for five to 10 years. So why are we just, even if we have the strategy to buy up properties that are for sale, the likelihood that a more, that a better property is going to come on the market that is more suitable and in a not-so-densely-packed area, or another Brownfields location, like the one on 28, it's pretty, there's a pretty good likelihood that that's going to happen. This is a very active real estate market. So I just don't understand why the rush. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi again. Carlton Crocker. Live on Highland Drive in Centerville. I am also the Prudential Committee Chairman for the Fire District, Centerville-Osterville Marshness Mills. I was just taking some notes, and I hope I can read them, I just had some eye surgery yesterday, but I think I can get through this in three minutes. Would like to ask the panel over here, those 27 pump stations you talked about initially, what is the book value of those properties that's coming off the tax rolls?
You know, we won't be answering. There's no direct dialogue, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
We're all going to take notes and try to answer them when we close the public hearing. There's never direct dialogue, though, I apologize.
Okay.
That's how the chamber works. Thank you.
Okay.
Please be afraid, don't be afraid to position a question, and we'll see if somebody brings it forward for you.
Okay. If it's not too late, I'd pass my bid term.
I've seen you hang in for some tough meetings, I'll give you that.
Okay, brother. The town is taken by eminent domain, paying $551,000, I heard, for property that's assessed on Barnstable books for around $360,000, almost $200,000 over its valued property on our town books. I don't think that's good business. I know that's good business, not good business. Nobody in their right mind would do this, I don't think. And it concerns me, taking property off the town tax rolls. That concerns me, because, well, I'll say first of all, that this is not the Centerville-Osterville Fire District speaking, it's me. But it will get to my board after these discussions tonight. That concerns me, because all residents of Fire Districts within the town have skin in the game, because they also pay Fire District tax, some of it coming off the tax rolls, which will now cause, there's a good probability that tax rates in our Fire District, which will go up. We haven't, if we have enough of these transactions, it will begin to hurt. Could I ask, I'll ask another question to the panel after, how many stations are planned for Centerville, Osterville, and Marshness Mills? And I would like to know the values of those, because they create a situation in our district for taxing, which we'll have to address at some point. To my knowledge, nobody, including any town council members, have come before the district with this proposition, to even discuss it with any of the districts, as to how it's going to affect the assessable property in the town that's going to be taxed, and it's going to be a big number. I think the town is jumping the gun. I think you need to go out into our towns and in our Fire Districts and talk to these people, it affects their tax rates. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me up twice.
Thank you for your service. Good evening. Please sign in.
Hi, my name is Susan Letterman. My husband and I live at 65 Joyce Anne Road. And I have some questions and some comments. I understand there's not going to be any back and forth, I understand that. I would like to say that the president of the Centerville Civic Association was absolutely right, whereby I think this should have been brought to a civic association and the citizens slash taxpayers slash voters before it came to this. I think that 310 Main Street being the lowest point for an ideal location for a wastewater plant and being for sale is a little too coincidental for my experience. I would like to know, and of course, I understand that I'm not going to get an answer, but this is something that people can think about in, should there be another public forum, what evidence, data, or experience is there relative to the pressurized portion of the wastewater system, where there are no explosions or other accidents, such as the Merrimack Valley incident, where the gas was pressurized? And I would think that people would want to know the safety of living around the plant, because it really has not been discussed. Most of it has been aesthetic. There's been about noise, but there really hasn't been anything about actual physical damage that it could cause. I'd like to know also if there are any studies regarding the belching, if you will, of carbon diluted waste energy from the plant. Is there an approximate dollar figure for homeowners slash taxpayers slash voters to tie into the sewage program down the line? And I know it's out of line, probably, but I don't, I don't think it's a negative for the Falmouth Road location to be used in this manner. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your hard work. My name's Chuck Tuttle. I live at 8 Wilton Drive in Centerville, lifelong Centerville resident. We have petitions here with hundreds of signatures. Wendy, there they are, for people who couldn't be here tonight. So there's a lot of support for what you've heard previously. Make no mistake, the proposal you're considering is to overspend for a single-family home in order to install and construct an industrial facility in a quiet residential neighborhood in one of Cape Cod's most scenic and in one of Cape Cod's most scenic and historic villages. Purchasing a single-family residence in order to accommodate sewer infrastructure has got to be highly unusual. It's my understanding that generally, these types of infrastructure are built on town land, on unbuildable lots, or some other type of small parcel that could not accommodate a single-family home. Indeed, there is a housing shortage here in Cape Cod. Opposition to this proposal is not nimby, or putting the interests of a few over the greater good. You've heard of, you've heard people mention Mother's Park again and again. That is our backyard. We don't mind having this in our backyard. We all want responsible wastewater treatment. We all want clean energy, but putting 100 windmills on Horseshoe Shoal was not a good idea. There's no reason to compromise the character of an historic village in order to accomplish something which could be done in a much less invasive and drastic way. I'm not quite sure where they came up with an appraisal of $546,000. I can tell you, that's not the market value of that house. 299 Main Street, which is right across the street, and 40 Wilton Drive sold for $375,000 and $435,000 respectively this summer. 310 Main Street is worth about $480,000. You guys are buying it for the list price. Some people call that the asking price. You're overpaying. I don't understand why you're buying more land than you need. We have two, a letter we received in Friday's mail, which was the first notice of any intent to install an industrial plant on Main Street, stated that 310 Main Street was more than what was required, and that the proposal included using most of the land for a park. We have two parks nearby. Why not use part of them for this? If 310 Main Street was not for sale, we would not be having this conversation. Just because a beautiful home located along a projected future sewer line is available for purchase, overpriced as it is, does not make it the best location for a sewer system pumping station. I work real estate every day here on sunny Cape Cod. In the past few days, I have, I personally have identified three, count them, three, properties in the Main Street Centerville area whose owners are very interested in selling. All three of these properties are in the $400,000 range, not the $550,000 range. And all three of these properties are much more innocuous, locations that would not disturb the character of the village community. And none of these owners have been contacted by the town.
I need you to wrap up, Chuck, please.
Yep. I learned today that the town manager received an email today from a Main Street Centerville homeowner interested in selling. In closing, the proposal that you're considering, born of concern and convenience, to purchase a single-family home at the gateway of an historic and charming village instead of finding a more reasonable, less impactful parcel, needs to be reset. Please continue your search. I'd be happy to help. Let's secure a better, more cost-effective, less problematic, more appropriate location for the sewer system pumping station. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. How are you?
Hello. I thought maybe last but not least. No, okay.
Certainly not.
My name is Barbara Farrenholz, and I am, I live at 328 Main Street, which is two doors down from said property. Love it, love it, love it. Moved here from Houston, Texas, after being there for 20 years. And I love antiques. I know Britt very well and admire everything that she does. She said she's been the director of the museum. Okay, so I'm kind of going at this at a little bit, I agree with everything that you all have said, everything. So I'm not going to say anything about that. About 10 years ago, I believe, it was suggested that we have the pump station put in Mother's Park. And again, we found out a very, very, very short time before, like about four days. So because I love history, I love old houses, I went to the meeting, and I asked everybody if they knew what Mother's Park stands for. Why is it called Mother's Park? And there is a history behind it. I don't know that you really want to know right now, but people, but I'm going to tell you.
I would ask you to keep the comments on the purchase of the land. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it refers to what I'm going to say about why I don't, why it should not be there.
Within the lie. Thank you. Thank you.
So it was in the 1800s. Son and, let's see, it was a brother and sister, the Marstons family. Let's see, Howard built Fernbrook, and that's where he was living. So they, let's see, their father died, their mother died, and they had owned that piece of land, where Mother's Park is. So they gave it to the town and said, you may have that for a park, but it has to be called Mother's Park, and it has to be in honor of our mother. So that, so it, well, anyway, I remember, you know, and they said, no, you have to put that pump station there. It's the only, only, only low place that's going to work. Well, it didn't happen. And now you're going here. Historic Main Street is filled with seacapin's homes. There's, there's so much history there. It's written up in every, on all the little booklets and everything. How wonderful it is. So I'm going at it from a little bit different angle. Don't change it. Let it stay as beautiful as it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Frank Ward. I live in Centerville. I'm probably speaking at my own peril here with this crowd, but I believe someone needs to defend this group here, because they've done a hell of a job. Markell's, Dan Santos and his team have created a great wastewater management plan. We need to trust them. We need to let them do their job. I think we all agree that we need sewers in Barnstable. No one disagrees with that. Sewers require pump stations. You have basically two choices in this area. You can put it at 310 Main Street, or you can put it in Mother's Park. Based on what was on the wall, that's your only choice. Every neighbor is going to panic initially, and then at some point, they'll understand that it's a requirement. They're going to build a house there in five years that'll go around this pump station that will look just like the house that's there now. Trust them. It, it won't disrupt your neighborhood. You don't, you're fortunate that you don't really have bad neighbors. And folks, good luck to you. You're going to do this 20, 30, 40, or 50 times. Oh, God, I'm glad I'm not you, but we appreciate what you're doing. But not all Centerville residents are against this 310 Main Street. Many of the 1,300 families that are in Phase 1 want this. I'm one of those. Everyone, when a new neighbor comes in, has concerns. There are bad neighbors. As examples, another neighbor could buy this and rent it through Airbnb daily and advertise it as a great place for bachelor parties. Some of us have this happening next door. That would be a real nightmare. Large crowds, loud parties, lots of drinking, beer cans all over the yard, open fire pits burning late into the night, and cars parked all over the neighborhood. Or a neighbor could move in and say, this is great. All 12 of us will move into this nice little house. We'll have nine cars, two trucks, and four motorcycles parked outside. That's a bad neighbor. It happens in this area. Or a new neighbor could move in, decide to raise chickens in that backyard. That's happening as well. And those chickens attract rats. That's not what DPW is about to do here. There are worse neighbors. This pump station is quiet, no smell, no cars, no crowds, no open fire pits well into the night, and no chickens. The lawn will always be mowed, the driveway always cleared, no trash burl left out at the curb all week long. That wouldn't be a bad neighbor. I would take that as a neighbor in a heartbeat. This may be the first of the many, many times you have to go through this, but buying this house is the right thing to do. Good luck to you. And I'm an E.P.S. court as I leave. Connors Road. I live in Centerville.
Point of order, point of order. That's ridiculous.
Mr. President.
We're not going there now. This has been a great meeting. We're going to keep it on this civil scale. Thank you.
You remember me?
I'd be good.
How are you, Justin?
Okay.
Please enunciate.
Joe Butera.
Thank you.
352 Main Street, Centerville, Mass. That's where I live, and I'm proud of it, and I love the, love the neighborhood. I remember going to, this is going to have to do with Main Street and that house, because every time it rains, we have major puddles at the end of Joyce Anne Road and in front of that house. And it wasn't too many years ago, four or five, when Main Street was just a oil with a stone on it, because no one wanted to spend the money and tar it. So there was a big meeting, and I remember going to the Town Rec Center or whatever it is down there by the, across from the Historical Society. And I believe the town manager, the town, somebody was there from, were you there? Well, somebody else was there who was an engineer. And, and there were two young people who gave us this whole plan of what was going to happen, taring Main Street, and they were going to put in drains and everything else. This has to do with engineering. And I said, well, you know, we have to do this because of these puddles. Because if you go through a puddle, and it's got six inches of water, you're going to hydroplane and kill somebody in the other lane. It's got to be taken care of. Everything's going to be taken care of. Don't worry about it. We're going to do it, and we're going to take. And then a few minutes later, the gentleman was asleep, who was, who was, you know, from this, this office somewhere. In any event, what did they do? They just tarred the road. There is still isn't a drain down there. And we still have all of that mess. And it's dangerous. And that's engineering. Now, if I go to Old Stages Road, it's the same thing. And I won't get into that, because we're going to talk about 310. But it's a, it's a disaster. It took four times to fix it, because it wasn't engineered properly. I don't know what happened. But not, not a good precedent when you're setting up a sewage system in a neighborhood, and we're going to, it's going to be under pressure. And what do you mean? I mean, there are people that don't want cows to live anymore. And we're going to be putting some gas in the air here. Not good. Not good. And, and I'm really not sure that this is the greatest place for it, because I didn't realize that it was industrial-zoned. I thought Main Street was residential. And this is an industrial-zoned sewer plant going in there. Am I wrong? I am wrong. So I'll, I'll just talk about an industrial. Okay. Well, anyway, it's an oxymoron to think about, because if I wanted to put up something there, there's no way I could do it. And I still go back to my original point that I made earlier. Why can't they, it's going to cost more money, but you're going to, you're going to also have to put up a new house. That's going to cost you another half a million bucks. You know, run the 40-foot pipe down and go to the, go across the street to, to the, to the gas station lot. Thank you. It is shooting from the hip line that house.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself. How are you?
My name is Virginia Sloan Clun, and I live at 428 Shoot Flying Hill Road. I don't live on Main Street. I love Main Street. I love the parades. I love the, the stuff we do at Christmas. I mean, it is a wonderful place, as is all of Cape Cod, as is Lake Wauquott, which is where I live. And I live near the public beach. I saw the public beach be a dead zone right around July 12. We're all in this together. I feel your fear, especially the stuff you were just talking about with blowing things up. You do need to know more, but I don't think you'll ever say yes. And there's going to be a lot of towns that face this. I could face it right across my street. It's okay. Because watching our water die is, is bringing everybody's house values down. And it has to be done. I don't know if you have to do it this second, but everybody is going to object to having these things. Then maybe you can make them prettier. The Centerville Association is great. You know, you can work on this together. We all have to work on this together, because this water thing is really bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jack Barrett at 311 Main Street. You get two of us. We're across the street. I was listening to this, and it reminded me of my company and what you all are going through right now, where my chief technology officer, Andrew, brilliant guy, brought his team, working a long time in our database. We manage a network of folks all around the country who are advocates for health. And they had a very carefully laid-up plan of how we're going to redesign our signup process. They went through the whole thing. We spent a lot of time in that room talking about that. What we didn't do is show it to the members of our network. We built it, we launched it, and guess what happened? It didn't work. What we didn't do was user testing. What we didn't do was look at the impact of the people who are really going to use it, be surrounded by it, and be a part of it every day. And that's the people in this room. I'll do your user testing. How many people here oppose the 310 Main Street station?
Please keep your comments to the council, please.
Okay. I did user testing. I apologize. I paid a lot for my user testing. You guys just got it for free. I think you understand there are other options. These are bright people. This gentleman just says it's infeasible to build something at the corner of 28. I don't think he really knows that answer. It was, I don't mean to catch you. You were trying to respond. I think you could make it work. I think you guys are smart enough to make it work without taking a particularly historic house that is directly abutting a national certified historic district. I think you can do better. That's what I said to my CTO, Andrew. I said, you can do better. Go back, do it until the users are happy. We're your users. We're your constituents. Go back. You can do better. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, Ali, Ali, I'm for your last call. I told you I'd wait you out. Let's go. Anybody else? Hearing none. I'd take a motion to close the public hearing portion of 2020-26. I got a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public comment portion of 2020-26, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. One abstention. One opposed. So please record the opposition. Thank you. Counselors, how would we like to pose as many questions as we think we heard? And maybe I should start with the group to see if there are any of the questions you heard that we might be able to address? Carlton, I'm sorry. I had to close the public hearing, so we can't take any more testimony from the public. No, I'm talking to my, my own staff. When the public portion is closed, it's the end of public comment. Thank you.
I, I can attempt to begin this discussion.
Sure.
We recognize that citing infrastructure in residentially developed areas is a very complex and difficult task. And very simply, this location was identified for technical reasons, because it's at the low point when we're trying to design a gravity sewer system. When we began, initially, we had a map in front of us and some topography, and we were looking at where are the low points. And then we went out to the low points. As we will, over the 8-plus-thousand properties, we're going to be looking at sewer-ing, I believe, in the first phase of this program. And we're going to be looking at where those low points are in our roadways. And the first thing we do is we look for, do we have municipal properties? So to the existing pump stations, I mean, our system is, was built decades ago. Many of these are within the roadway and utilized municipal properties or open properties. Jump ahead 50 or 60 years, and here we are. Now, this is an older neighborhood, certainly, so I'm sure most of those properties were there when we put the sewers in in the existing location. So we can, I can have the assessor run the information on, on, you know, taxable versus non-taxable. I think in the future, that'll certainly be something we will address each step of the way. But again, this was, this was located in a developed area. It's the low point. We went to the site, and the property in front of the low point was for sale. We went out and had an independent appraisal done. We went out and had an independent appraisal done and that's what the value was. And so we went forward with discussions at that location. So I think that that's as simple as a very complex process is. And certainly, those of you who spoke that are in the real estate business, understand the nature of a transaction between a private party and even us as a municipal entity when we enter into that negotiation process. So we weren't circumventing anything. We did this step by step by the laws of the Commonwealth. We did it out of, all of these activities for the Town of Barnstable fall into the town manager. My office, in coordination with our legal department, were doing those discussions and, which culminated in us bringing forward this purchase consideration before town council this evening. So we can cert, I'm looking at the spreadsheet that our assessor has next to us, but many of these properties are located within layouts. They're located within cul-de-sacs. And we would have done that here had that opportunity at the low point presented itself. It didn't. So hence, we're having this discussion.
Could I ask you to follow through on a portion that you opened the door? There was some question about how we negotiated. And I know our assistant town manager is out on family items and we feel for him. But I believe he led the negotiations and I believe he started with assessed value. Do you have any knowledge of the process that he undertook, whether there was offers?
I do.
Offers and purchases and sales.
We are actually, thank you for the question. We are actually, that is our starting point when we go out and we look at properties in our community. And we are actually held under that purchasing process to be within 1.25% of, or 125% of that assessed value. When it is not that number. And we always go out and get an independent assessment, valuation rather. Assessment is what our assessor does. Because it's more reflective of a current market, up or down. We went to a reputable firm. We received that assessment and it came back higher than the 125% of the assessed value.
The appraisal, the appraisal came back higher?
The appraisal came back higher than the assessment. Therefore, the discussions went into, the negotiations rather went into a discussion about whether the owner would be interested in a friendly taking. And the price that was offered was the negotiated price by my office and our legal department.
And these are all covered by state statutes, how you have to operate?
Correct.
And how you chase appraisals and everything else. Okay. I think that answers the question of how the negotiations occurred. Counselors, do you have some questions that might help clear what the audience's requests are? Yes. Counselor Cullen?
Always starts at the end, first day. Okay, so I, can we go back to the pump station picture up there? The one with the various, yeah, that one. Go back. So see the pretty one on the top right? I don't remember which Brady daughter that was, but that's across the street from my house. And I hear no noise, literally across the street from my house. I also have chickens, though. That's fair warning. So right across the street from my house, I hear no noise. I smell nothing. It's literally the best neighbor you could have. And by the way, when they do work on it, they are very safe with cones. They went in and did a lot of like hedge removal. They removed the guardrail, replaced the guardrail. It's really very livable. I'm just gonna say that. I do understand the shock of hearing about it a few days ago, but I do wanna say, in all honesty, we don't even think about it. But I am gonna ask for a nice little house to be built over it now that I see there's all these options. So that's next week. But I also wanna object to it being called a plant. It's not a plant. It's a pump station. It's small. That would fit like, I could fit two of those in my garage. And it's a one-car garage. And I just wanna speak again, I really, there's two things I wanna say. One is, I don't quote Paul Hebert very often, but I'm gonna quote him tonight. A few weeks ago, we were talking about how terrible Lake Wauquott was, the situation in Lake Wauquott this summer. And he said the most astute thing that night of all of us, which was, we don't wanna give up anything. But we have to. We have to give up something in order to save the water that we have. The water that we drink, the water that we're standing on. We have to start thinking about not what are they taking from me, but what can we do to help? That's really what we need to start doing. And then finally, I know it's, people are really emotional and fired up about it, but this again speaks to something I've said many times, that we should have our engineers' qualifications listed on the town website. So you guys know that we don't have a bunch of hokey people working for us. They're brilliant. They're educated. They have a lot of experience. So I object to the tenor in the room when it sounds like, oh, they just, you know, were bored on a Friday and this is a back-of-the-envelope calculation and we don't care about, you know, 28. But, you know, yeah, I mean, the tenor was there. The tenor was there.
Please, 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 please.
So I object to that. And I think we have a very professional staff and I am gonna follow them on this. So thank you.
There is a piece. Please, could I have civility? There is a piece of business we need to do. I would ask for a motion to extend our time beyond 11 o'clock, which are the chamber rules. I have a first and a second. Do they hear a second? All those in favor of continuing our work beyond the hour of 11, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Thank you. Counselor Neary?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna just hopefully touch base on some of the questions that came forth and maybe add a little bit of clarity. I think it was Beth Herrick. One of the questions was, why is it so important to make this vote now, tonight? I know it's a real estate transaction. I don't know who might be able to speak to that question. Anybody?
I would ask Attorney McLaughlin, if he's present, to the degree that you can disclose. Could you discuss the timeframes?
Yes. The agreement that we have for damages calls for, and this was a negotiated point, the sellers were concerned about the timeframe associated with this process since as a seller, it's an unusual process. But we were determined to go through the purchase or amendment domain process and we expelled that out for them. And they were insistent on a timeline that calls for a vote by this council by September 30th. And if we had an affirmative vote, that we would close by November 8th. If we postpone, if we do not have a vote tonight, by the terms of the agreement, it evaporates automatically without any further action by the parties. I have called the broker and we've been, I've been attempting, she just texted me a few minutes ago and I'm trying to get some guidance. I don't know what their attitude is. They've been very cooperative. And they are interested in not having this property off the market for an indefinite period of time. I don't know what their response will be to a request for an extension on the September 30 date.
Thank you.
And this is our last meeting before September 30th. Yes, go ahead, Counselor Neary.
I guess I could maybe address this to the engineering aspect of things. We talk about this particular property being a targeted property, for lack of a better word, and the fact that it is available, it's on the market, which allowed the town to maybe enter into at least questioning or inquiring about the availability of it. Can you maybe answer how long it's been, call it property number one on the agenda list, so to speak?
The reason that we're addressing this right now is because we have, you have voted on appropriations and we are designing the sewer expansions. And so part of that design is designing pump stations and identifying their locations. So we have been, since we got those funds, working on that design and went through the process of identifying locations for pump stations in the areas that are gonna be served by sewer. And as I explained earlier, our process is to look at, I think Mark also addressed it as well, look at topographic elevations, look at what municipal properties are in the area, look at what other properties are in the area and make a recommendation as to what the ideal location for the pump station would be. That undertaking was blind to what was for sale. We didn't know it was for sale. We undertook the process to find the best location for a pump station, went out in the field to evaluate that and low and behold, that the, right in front of the low point, the property's for sale. So call it serendipity or call it what you want. It's an opportunity that's presented itself to provide the best location for a pump station to serve this neighborhood.
Thank you. One more?
Please.
I guess this would be again directed to the DPW. How can we guarantee, should this item go forward, whether it be tonight or at a future time, how can we guarantee to the residents that noise pollution, odors, these type of things wouldn't occur? And present company excluded, I mean, time goes by. This could be five, seven, 10 years down the road. We all may not be here. What type of guarantee, for lack of a better word, could, would be offered to the residents to ensure that what we say we're doing today will be followed through?
Well, it's designed specifically to do those things, to address those concerns. And then annually, we submit appropriation requests for operation and maintenance and we have maintenance procedures and operation procedures for all of our facilities about what we do on a frequency basis. And we request those funds and we undertake those O&amp;M activities every year. So this is a written plan. We have professionals that operate our water pollution control facilities and all the pump stations and the, all the collection system. And they maintain it in accordance with those design plans for the original design that was provided by the engineers.
Counselors? Yeah? Counselors? Anyone? I'm looking to my side. Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to the public for turning out and all the terrific comments and suggestions that you've put forward and I appreciate what you've done. Can I ask a few questions again of our panel to try to answer some of the questions that the folks had? Number one, can I ask, if we look at the nitrogen load, can we estimate the nitrogen load that's coming out of the Hyannis Historical District, if we will? Leading to, if we bypassed, if we did not sewer the Centerville Immediate District, would that put a strain on the rest of our system and would it continue to be a contributor to our water? Is it possible?
Well, it would certainly continue to contribute to the contamination of our coastal water bodies.
It would, okay.
For sure. And we have certain standards, according to the Clean Water Act, that we have to meet and that the plan is specifically designed to address the areas that contribute to our exceeding those standards. So this has to be done.
All right. So that answers that question clearly. If we, because we're talking five, 10 years, does the Mother's Park present another option that we could realistically look at again?
As I explained earlier, Mother's Park is a viable alternative, but there are issues that have to be worked through to see whether or not you could actually locate a pump station there. And that relates to ownership, state law, relative to what parks are and what you can do on parks. And again, our original intent, as we looked in this area where we needed to put a pump station, was the negative response and pushback to locating a pump station on Mother's Park 10 years ago. That was a real, I wasn't here then and town manager can speak to that if he'd like, but I mean, that's factual, that there was a desire not to have a pump station in that area. And the fact is, there needs to be a pump station somewhere in that area. If there's gonna be sewers there, there needs to be a pump station.
Okay. Thank you, because that clarifies our position, you know, what we have to do. I have to say that this morning, I went on a little trip and I went and visited in my precinct, the pump stations. And I concur with Counselor Cullen that I became a pump whisperer and I went right up to the grills and I listened. My neighbor's air conditioner, I hear a lot more than any sound that was coming out. You could hear a hum inside the building if you actually put your ear to the grate, which I did. And then I stiffed the whole place. And there was no odor in any of the two places that I went to. So I'm convinced that there is no odor and there is no sound, noise, coming out of that and that it could make a good neighbor to a community. I don't want anyone to think that we are taking this lightly or that we made a pre-decision that this was a, not to even be discussed, that we were all in the same boat. I think we're all struggling to make sure that we represent the people in this community in the best interest of the entire community, in particularly at this time, to the Centerville community. So thank you.
I would like to get one point of clarification on that discussion with Counselor Hebert. I was in a meeting this week with the town attorney and we were also talking, not only do you have to get the legislature to approve the change, but you also usually have to bring forward swappable land. So it doesn't come for free. There's always another angle. Counselor Dagwan, did I see you?
Thank you, Mr. President. I live in Hyannis, but, you know, I'm a counselor for my precinct, but I'm also a counselor for the whole town. And so I'm always concerned when, for the Town of Barnstable, I'm always concerned when constituents aren't, feel as though they've been informed. That is an issue for me at this juncture. And particularly, I don't live in a historic zoned area. And I think when people buy homes in a historic zoned area, they buy a historic house, there are specific specifications. You can't do whatever you wanna do with that house because of where it is. It's in zoned, it's in a historic area. And I think it's important that when something is put in a historic area, that people need to know. I mean, if you're in there, you have a house there and you can't just paint it any color you want, well, when we decide to put something there, like a pump station, you should, I feel you should have known that that's gonna happen and that, you know, because it's historic. So, but the question, another question I heard people ask tonight, I just would like for Dan and them to answer, just, you know, take it up again. I heard this several times. Why is it, you know, it's gonna take five to 10 years? I understand what, you know, why that means. But I heard several people say that. They didn't understand, you know, we're gonna do this, why, why it's gonna take, you know, five to 10 years? So just, if you could just address that question.
The reason primarily is that we have a number of projects that have been funded for design to expand the sewer system. And you have to do it in a certain progression. So we need to put in the pump station on Route 28 and put in the main force main. And then from that, you can go into the neighborhoods. And we have to do the design, do the final design, do all the construction procurement. So that does take time. Takes a number of years to do that. So we are, it's under design now. So this is not really something that we're thinking about doing. We've been directed through the appropriation to design the expansion of sewers in this area to include a pump station. And our best estimate, given all those things I just mentioned and the timeframes that they take, is that will be within, you know, five to 10 years.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just being proactive and these things go in stages. They don't, you know, in phases. you know, in phases, then happen in, you know, one state. So, that's why it's spread out over time.
And to clarify, so we're not, it's not like we're saving this property, and we're going to start thinking about it in five years or four years. We're doing the design now, that's why we even started looking at this area and this property.
Thank you for clearing that up for people.
To get a clarification on a couple of those items. I saw in your presentation that you had checked the zoning, checked the residences, there is no historic zoning on the parcel, and the house was built in the 60s.
Yes, correct.
So it certainly doesn't qualify, Counselor Dagwan, as the historic attributes that we call historic in our own, in our town manual. Secondly, we were talking about different issues from how you plan and design. We are about to send our plan up to DEP to sign off on. And every time you have a chance, and I have to be honest, I called out Mashpee for having a plan that they never spent a dime on and never moved with any of it. So, part of what we did as a council was start to vote to support the planning, the design, the issues that were going to be spoken to in the plan, so that the state would know that we're already working on these issues. These aren't pipe dreams of ours, like some other plans that have been submitted. These are, these are the real nuts and bolts of how we intend to address our features. So I think the idea of what the DEP sees, why we voted as a council in the past for these expenditures, why you need to secure something that you're saying is the place that you're jumping off of, is almost self-explanatory when you think of what we're coming up to and what we're submitting to the DEP in the very near future. But I just wanted two clarifications. Yes, Counselor Rap Crisetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. It shows, well, it shows a little bit lack of transparency, this item. This was advertised in the Barnstable Patriot on the 6th of, I guess, 6th of September. And as a required, it's got to be advertised two weeks before a vote. But the advertising advertises as a parcel with a Cessar's map and parcel number. It didn't put the address, which, I don't know, I think it should have had the address in the advertisement. Maybe it would have jumped out to the residents a little bit more clearly. So it's concerning when I hear that the residents haven't heard about this. And so, I think, just going forward, I think the town should develop a transparent and very open process to vet these pump station sites. Now, I know we have the authority to take property for the public good, but there has to be a little bit more of community involvement. The civic association was kind of left out in the dark on this, and that has me concerned. My question was going to be to you, Mark, you know, who came up with this strategy to purchase, but that's been answered. But I don't believe that the Mother's Park parcel is insurmountable. I think especially when you're looking, that this parcel won't even be used for five years. I think the Mother's Park parcels should be looked at, perhaps closing the road, the Mother's Park Road, to use that land there. And as we've seen in some of these photographs, you know, you really don't need to put a big structure around these. You can put, you know, your control panel, and, you know, your manhole cover and whatnot, and then put nice screening around it. Mother's Park seems to be, you know, to me, a much more suitable location. I know it's not as deep or as low, but I also know that there's standing water in rain times on one end of that park. So, and I know we've spent money to improve that park. I don't know as I've ever, ever seen anybody in the park, but I don't live in that area, so, but I, I, I know we're up against something as far as a purchase and sale, but, so, those can be adjusted. I really think there should be a pause on this, and I think that the... And, you know, I, just talking with my fellow counselor here, we were talking just briefly about the charter objection. And I know that's been changed. The council rules the charter objection when it comes to financial decisions for the town, but I don't know as I'm going to support this item. But I would like to see it continued, but only, I don't know, I guess I'd just like to see it die and have us look at Mother's Park.
Counselor Rap Crisetti would like to make a motion to have it continued?
Not after I've just discussed it.
I'm just asking, you seem to hit up in that direction. Thank you. Anybody else? Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Question for Attorney McLaughlin. If we do postpone the vote tonight, as you already suggested, the current proposal evaporates, to quote you. Do we have any financial liability?
None.
None whatsoever?
None.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Flores, I just want to expand, since I had referenced an exchange of texts with the broker. The broker did get back to me in the last few minutes, and was somewhat optimistic, reports being optimistic, but that it could be extended. But there's no guarantee of that until it actually happens. Certainly not going to happen tonight. So I think operatively, you should assume that the, if we don't take a vote tonight, the deal is dead unless it's resurrected.
And if this did not get enough votes this evening from the council, what would option be, option two be, from the DPW's perspective? Would it be Mother's Park, or would it be these three or four properties that Chuck Tettles says that he knows are available on Main Street? Where would we go?
I don't, I can't say where we would go. We would look at other parcels. We would look at Mother's Park. Again, we'd look at it technically, as well as aesthetically. Maybe there's parcels that are, if this parcel wasn't for sale, we may have been talking about another parcel that we would want to purchase to seek people out, or, as people have mentioned here, by eminent domain. You know, sometimes that's the last, the last opportunity to get what you need. But again, we're trying to put infrastructure in to support sewers. We'd have to look at a lot of different things. So, Mother's Park would be one, but other locations would be looked at as well.
Thank you. Counselor Neary?
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe if possible, can you pull up a slide just on the elevation changes? Kind of look at the difference between Mother's Park and the property in question? Can you see it on there? So elevation change is somewhere in the five-foot range. I could assume that properties either adjacent to or close to it would be somewhere in that area as well? And then, with that said, what is the process? I mean, the town is not in the process of soliciting properties, I wouldn't think, or is there a mandate that that is actually available to do?
By soliciting properties, you mean?
Knock on a door and ask somebody how much they want for the house, or if a piece of the property is available?
Well, the difficulty...
Just to get it in the air, you know?
The difficulty in this, from the technical standpoint, is that you're looking for the low spot in a gravity sewer. So, when we went out there and saw that a property was for sale at the low point in a gravity sewer, that presented opportunity. These will always be very difficult processes, especially in developed residential neighborhoods. That's all. I mean, yes, we can go out there and try to find within, as we designed, as has been described. This is coming about because we are proceeding with the design in this area, and we're looking at where the low point in the sewer system occurs naturally, because we had other technologies brought up earlier. We have vacuum sewers in Barnstable. Those sewers failed. That is not a technology that can be applied everywhere. It reached the end of its useful life, and now we're moving toward putting in gravity sewers, because gravity sewers last 50 to 100 years.
Sure.
Vacuum sewers have problems, they're applicable in appropriate places, but they have some challenges. We weren't recommending that for this location. So, to come back to your question, yes, we will probably have to take that approach when we look across our community in developed residential neighborhoods, and we find out in the design, we're not doing that everywhere yet, but we will, where those low points are.
It's going to happen, correct.
It's going to happen. This is, we're in the process of designing here, that's why it's happening here and now.
With that said, five feet, what does that, what effect does that have on engineering?
Just point out, I'll leave the engineering to the people who have been doing the design side of this. Mother's Park, I think that we can't just assume that we can relocate it to Mother's Park. I think that there is an absolute process that would be involved to get us to a point where, we'd have to stop these designs, and we would have to resolve that issue if that were a viable location. And then we could, if it was found to be a viable location, then we could proceed with it.
I agree with that. I think more, my opinion is I think Mother's Park is too high a hurdle, frankly. I mean, with the regulation and all of the stuff involved with it. But I'm speaking more specifically to, like, properties in close proximity to Mother's Park, left or right.
But I guess...
But now, I understand the eye on the market, I get that, too.
No, I don't know why they would not be opposed similarly as this property, if there are other residential properties. I would think the concerns would apply to any residential property in that area. Now, I'm speaking for what I've heard tonight, but I think that's a logical conclusion.
Please, order, order. Counselor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you. I have been remaining silent so that I could listen to everyone's comments, give my fellow counselors the opportunity to ask their questions, express their thoughts. I have a number of questions, and then I have comments. I'll start with my questions. So just going back to the citing and the timing of this. So, you know, one thing I'm wondering is, you know, I know Counselor Neary said he thinks the Mother's Park piece is insurmountable, but I'm not entirely convinced of that. And I'm wondering, you know, is there, you know, what if we went forward with the purchase of this property? I'm just throwing, before you make any growling noises. If you went forward with the purchase of this property, and just kind of held it to the side so we didn't lose this opportunity, because it is the most ideal location on the street, but then at the same time, we then pursued the Mother's Park piece to see if that could come through, so that we had a backup should the Mother's Park site fall through? Could that potentially be an option? And if, if the Mother's Park piece then did pass Article 97, and we were able to find or identify a swappable piece of land, would we then put, then, put the house, other house at the 310 Main Street back on the market? I'm just trying to figure out how, what different options do we have, so that we don't miss this opportunity, should this be the only way we can go?
I take it you're asking me that question?
[laughing]
You know, I'll be honest, because that's a difficult question. These are policy decisions we need to make. This is the first of this type of discussion on a massive sewer expansion program in Barnstable over the next 30 years. I think that if you don't proceed, and this is a very technical look, an opportunity presented itself at the appropriate technical location. I think that we need to step back, and I think we need to make some policy decisions about citing infrastructure such as this. Because, I could give you an answer, but I don't know that it would be the best answer for you, and I, meaning you as a council and a community. So, I think that what we've done is logical, I believe it's defendable, and I know it's, it has followed the laws of the state of Massachusetts. I understand what our residents are saying, and I expected these sorts of discussions here today, and going forward, every time we try to cite infrastructure such as this. To go out and take by eminent domain at low points in a not, in a hostile sort of taking, that is a much different scenario to be in than to be in a friendly scenario. That's why this was of interest, quite honestly. We're not looking at accumulating properties, quite the contrary. We're looking at every asset in the community that we hold, and we're trying to decide what its purpose is. And if it has no purpose, we're looking at whether we should retain it any longer after we go through an appropriate review process. So we're not looking to create an inventory, but I understand what you're saying here. We have an opportunity. We don't know the outcome relevant to Mother's Park, so you're keeping both balls in the air with this option. But I think that if you opt not to do this, we need to step back and have a policy discussion, because we're spending significant amounts of money on designs and going forward with these efforts. And we certainly want to be clear of our assumptions relevant to certainly a location of a pump station or otherwise, when we do that.
So, you know, that leads me to, you know, the other piece of this, is that, you know, if we, if we purchased the 310 Main Street property, you know, the idea, and we've had this conversation, that we would ideally build an identical house around that pump station, so that it's in keeping with the neighborhood, and it looks like a single-family house, has lights, has a driveway, which also, from a taxpayer perspective, is an interesting thing, because it's a significant expense. So I'm just trying to weigh our, you know, weigh our options, keep our options open, not lose the opportunity while we're still exploring if there are other things that are viable. But I also don't think, there are too many people that have the stomach for eminent domain takings, particularly hostile ones, right? Where now we're going down the street and going, well, it's not going to work here, and they don't want us to buy that, so you know what, we're going to do this one here instead. And I don't think that that is really how we want to go forward either. Moving on, I just wanted, there's some other questions that were brought up that I want to make sure are addressed. Some folks had asked about connecting to the sewer line. So, folks in the neighborhood, what could they expect to, you know, roughly, I mean, because I know you haven't even fully decided when you're going to be able to put in the line, it's sometime within the next five to 10 years. So roughly, what would residents in the neighborhood expect as far as hookup? And cost is a really difficult thing, also to estimate, because we're talking about years out, and we're talking about bonds and all other kinds of things, and so that's a, very much a moving target. But if there's any way you can address that at all, to that question?
So timeframe-wise, again, we're projecting about five to 10 years until we're actually executing the project. Once the project's being executed, it's probably a two-year construction project, once we start breaking ground, and that encompasses that whole Long Pond sewer expansion area. So it's a fairly large project, and it will take time. Once the project is executed, at that point, homeowners can then connect. The time where they will be required to be connected, that will be determined at another timeframe, that, I'm not sure when that will be. But they will be able to connect once construction is complete, which at this point would be, if we start five years, it would probably be seven years. About two years after we start is what my estimate would be.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding using it as a rental property, who's the landlord? How do we manage that? What if there are problems? Who's responsible? How do residents feel comfortable having a rental property in their neighborhood?
Town manager's responsible for the assets of the community under the charter. That's an authority that certainly you look for your town manager to take responsibility for. We do have other properties in town that are residential, where we have, in the case of the one example that I gave, AmeriCorps Living right now. We manage over, I think over 1,100 properties in the town of Barnstable. Some of them people live in. Some of them are municipal. Some of them are open space. So, yes, we do this. It is certainly an interim measure. I think leaving a property vacant would present more problems. I think that trying to use it for some other municipal use isn't appropriate in a residential neighborhood, certainly not having trucks coming and going every day. I think that a similar use to what is existing on and around that property is appropriate, and it's residential. So that's the way we would look to do this. We would be responsible for it. We would have to make sure it was compliant before we had anybody occupy it, as we do in the other properties that we manage in town.
In regards to the design of it, how do you see, would you be willing to work with the neighborhood and get their feedback on how they would envision that location to look like? Whether it was just an open space, a green space, and the pumping mechanism is fully concealed by shrubs? Or if they preferred, you know, it to be a playground? They preferred it to be a house? How do you, what is your plan?
So.
Can you answer your question? Oh, I'm sorry, go Dan. I was actually gonna address the process moving ahead. And right now, we have design money. And what's before you tonight is just purchasing of the property. You're not approving a pump station tonight. Okay? So the process in this design is, if we secure that property, we would move ahead with a design for a pump station on that property. We would reach out through you and your office to the community and the civic association when we had some conceptual designs. And we'd get input on what the community was looking for. We'd draw up some options, present them, and it'd be an iterative process. And at that point, once we came to some consensus on what the appropriate structure would be, then it comes to the council in an appropriation request for construction. And that's when you would ultimately approve or not the pump station on that location.
Okay. So just to be very clear, there are actually two parts to this process. Tonight is the vote on the purchase of the property, not an approval of a pump station.
Correct.
That would be a separate vote at a separate time.
Correct.
All right. Again, regarding design, can the existing building potentially be saved and the mechanism put inside the current building? So essentially, you keep the four walls, you've got the inside, you do it, you need to, when it comes time. But you mean, we don't lose that property?
That would be unlikely, given that we have to do a lot of earthwork within that footprint and put the wet well in and the pumps. And I think that would be almost impossible with the existing structure in place.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So this is, this is a, this is a tough thing. This is a really, this is a really tough spot. Because for me, in looking at this, the piece that's missing here is the time. The piece that's missing here is, was that adequate amount of time to reach out to the community and have those community meetings. And I think for that, it's very unfortunate that we're at this moment. Because I think this could have gone a lot more smoothly, and we could have had the opportunity to quell a lot of fears and make people feel a lot more comfortable. I am your neighbor. I live on Main Street. I have worked with some of you. Barbara, you were one of my volunteers at the museum when I was director there for seven years. I know how historic that village is, and I know how much people care about it. Some of you are friends. Some of you are very close friends of my husband's family. So this is very much close to home for me. That said, I have done a tremendous amount of due diligence on this. I have not known about this much longer than you have, just so you know. So I told you, not so much, not so much time passed from when I found out to when I sent you that letter, those 35 households, letting you know that this was coming before the town council. I have spoken to all the town department heads. I have looked at plans. I have spoken to former town councilors. I have reached out to members of select boards in other towns who are dealing with this massive wastewater infrastructure and clean water project that we're trying to do. Because as someone pointed out earlier, the fundamental issue here is our environment. It is protecting our clean water, our ponds, our lakes. If you're on Wacocket or on Long Pond, this was a rough summer for you. And it's not going to get better for any of us. And so it really is trying to keep that number one priority first in mind. And I will be very honest with you and tell you that if a pump station were put in next door to my house, knowing what I know now, not knowing what I did two months ago, but knowing what I have started to learn about two, three weeks ago, was that I would be completely comfortable having a pump station right next to my house. In fact, in, so, in doing that due diligence and talking to all of those various people who are far more knowledgeable and experienced than I am, in riding around looking for pump stations that I could sit next to, smell, hear, SD Avenue was one in particular that I didn't realize that. I ride my bike regularly. And I have probably biked by that pump station, I don't know, 400 times in the last few years. And I never, ever knew it was there until our engineer told me the location of that pump station. So I went there, and I looked at it, tried to see if there's any smell, didn't hear anything. And that is, you know, that was confirmed by all my bike rides by it. I also went and knocked on the doors of the residents around there. And I asked, there were two homeowners that were home. One was directly, she was in front of it, to the left. So she can see the pump station. So, you know, someone had mentioned it's a conservation area, totally different. Well, there are still people, still residents that like look directly at it, live right next door to it.
There are two residents there.
There's, there's.
There are two houses that look at that empty.
There, there are, it is smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood. There are people that drive by it all the time. The point being, just being that, I spoke to residents who live next to and look at a pump station. Here's one right here. Jen Cullum lives right across the street from one. I've been to Jen's house. And all I'm trying to tell you is just that, I think there is also a lot of fear of what this is. And I think the fear is not, in reality, well-founded. I understand because you don't know it, and you haven't had the chance to learn about it. And for that, I apologize, because I do agree that there hasn't been ample time to bring you up to speed and help you along in understanding what these things are and are not. So anyway, I just, I wanted to address that. Incidentally, the gentleman who lives right next to the pump station on SD Avenue, for example, I was not able to speak to him. But I did find out through research that he purchased that house after that pump station was put in. And he purchased that property for a million one. And for the last 10 years, the property values over there have continued to increase. Chuck, you also know as a real estate agent.
Yes, I call up.
Oh, sorry. Anyone who's a real estate agent also knows that property values, it is a selling point for a house when your house is on sewer as opposed to septic. So I just want to assure you that plummeting property values on Main Street in Centerville, off of Wilton Drive, Joyce Anne Road, that is not going to happen. Because the research, the data proves it out. They did, the Cape Cod Commission did a study of sewered neighborhoods versus non-sewered neighborhoods. They focused on West Hyannis Port and Cobb's Hill in Barnstable. They did a study that came out in 2013. They looked at a 30-year period. And the property values of the sewer neighborhood, both areas increased in property values. But the difference was literally double in the sewored area than it was in the non-sewored area. So I just, I, just data, okay? So, so while I will apologize for the, you know, what definitely does seem like a lack of transparency, it was never intentional. And as I mentioned, I did not know about this much longer than you did. And the town is trying to make good on the wastewater infrastructure plans that it has been trying to move forward for now, for three decades. And in fact, this town council, over the last year, has been taking a lot of criticism for not moving forward. Our town departments, our DPW's been taking hits for where is your comprehensive wastewater management plan? And why aren't you moving forward on this? We have really bad situations in our ponds, our lakes, our estuaries. And so we are making good on this. And we're moving forward. The thing that, again, is unfortunate is that this group is not part of what is going to be happening starting in October, which is the rollout of the comprehensive wastewater management plan and that whole public engagement process and education process that is apparently going to be taking place after that point. And if this situation with this house for sale that has the most ideal location for a potential pump station were not before us, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So it is, I think we are remiss not taking advantage of this opportunity that we have before us right now. And I think what we need to do going forward is, as a neighborhood, we will work with the DPW to make sure that how that mechanism, and again, it is not an industrial zone, it is not an industrial complex. This is a smallish unit. Again, you can go, they're all over town, you can visit them. It is a small unit that can be contained in whatever it is that you want it to be contained in. And we will make sure that we work with the neighborhood so that it looks, looks however you want it to look. If you want it to look like a single-family home that looks like it's part of that neighborhood, that's what we can do. And on the other side of it, when it comes to the property being used as a rental, I agree with our town manager to leave it vacant is more problematic. And I will make sure, I promise you, I will make sure that that property, as a rental property, poses absolutely no problems to the neighborhood. And if there are any issues, I will be working with our town manager to resolve them immediately. But I think we are really remiss in not taking advantage of the purchase of this property when it is the most ideal location for what we need for our infrastructure needs, which will ultimately benefit our environment. And if you're worried about property values, wait till we have no clean water, and you can't swim in a Wacocket, and you can't let your dogs go in Long Pond. So, again, I apologize for the fact that the way this process rolled out was not very inclusive of the neighborhood. And I think this is, this is a lesson to this town council and to our town departments of how we need to do a better job moving forward. But I do not want to miss this opportunity to purchase a property that is so key to this portion of the infrastructure project. So I am going to, I am going to move forward with this vote if it remains on the table.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Tinsley.
Thank you. I'll make it short, I'll make it brief. It could be the first time I've ever spoke after 11 o'clock in 12 years, so. It is a difficult vote, but 10 years ago, when we had to take the vote on Stewart's Creek, that was a difficult vote. Because I knew a vote yes would take tens of thousands of dollars out of people's pockets. That vote kept me up night after night. That vote had to be taken at the high school because so many people came. That was a difficult vote for someone sitting up here. I reached out to many people at that time, and I don't, we had a lot of people talk, and I appreciate it. But whoever said that, this isn't the first time we've heard this information as far as the process. We ask questions when we get this. We don't come up here and just start from go at 7 o'clock. I won't repeat what, and some of you said it. We all know. Water, wastewater, that is the number one. I've said it up here, I've said it up here recently. These are difficult decisions we make. This is not always an easy job. I don't appreciate people thinking there's some conspiracy theory. I don't know if that's a countrywide thing, but that's not the case. Everybody up here cares about the town of Barnstable. They care about making the right decision, and we put a lot of thought and time into it. And we know, not everybody's going to be happy when we have to make a decision. I've had to be escorted to my car by the Barnstable police before, back in the Stewart Creek days. But you can't give up, you gotta work hard at it. And the gentleman who used to live on Winter Street and said everybody moved away, no they didn't, because I lived by Winter Street. I've lived there for 26 years, and with the help of the Barnstable police, we got rid of drug dealers and gun dealers, because I don't give up on important stuff. And raise your hands. So yes, I'm supporting this because it's the right decision. And we have town staff that will work with you, and I'm glad it was finally brought up after hours, that this is not a vote for a pump station, it's a vote to buy a piece of property. There will be a vote to build a pump station, but that's not this vote. And I didn't do this when you spoke. And unfortunately, that is pervasive in our community, in our country. I listened to you, and I just ask you, listen to me. We do our very best. And sometimes those decisions aren't popular ones, but they're decisions that have to be made. So yes, I am supporting this. And I will continue to support the protection of our natural resources. And unfortunately, as it was said by Councilor Cullum, we all have to give up something sometimes to make that happen.
Thank you, Councilor Tinsley. Hearing no further question, no further discussion, I move it to our Assistant Clerk for a vote. That is 2020-025.
Flores?
Yes.
Rob Grissette?
No.
Hebert?
For the sake of our town, yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Steinhilde?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's take a five-minute recess. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Please have safe travel to your cars. We're gonna take a two-minute hiatus, real, real truth. Counselors, a two-minute hiatus, please use the restroom, get yourself in order. We got some business.
And we're fortunate to have our Director of Growth Management for the rationale. Could I get Counsel Wallace to read it in, please? The last article?
Twenty-four.
It's twenty-four, sir. The last article. Not the last article. Take it back. Next to last.
This is new business and may be acted upon. It's item number 2020-032. Resolve authorizing the town of Barnstable to participate in the Massachusetts Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, PACE Massachusetts. It's a roll call, simple majority, as written.
Thank you. And it's before us, and we're fortunate to have our Director of Growth Management. And please introduce our guest from the state.
Thank you. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. I'm pleased to be joined tonight by Wendy O'Malley from Mass Development, the PACE program administrator. We're here tonight to ask for your support and participation in this Mass Development program. It's an economic development incentive program that provides benefits to commercial businesses to install clean energy improvements in their properties. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wendy, who will give you just a brief overview.
Thank you for joining us, and thank you for hanging in with us. How are you?
Thank you, Counsel. I know it's late, so I have the presentation here, but I will only spend a quick minute to give you a brief overview and then happy to answer any questions at that time. This is a new energy improvement financing program that is going to be administered by Mass Development, who is authorized by statute to administer the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program in consultation with the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. This new financing program will allow commercial industrial property owners and the Commonwealth to access financing that's repaid via a betterment assessment that's placed on their property and tied to their property. This will allow Commonwealth businesses to be more competitive on their energy costs and allow their properties to save money so that they can remain in the community, remain viable, and producing business and not relocate to other properties where they can save money on energy in other adjacent communities or other states. This is a unique program that will allow property owner to access financing up to 20 years. So it allows a longer term than alternative energy financing that's traditionally available. And it allows property owners to look at a more comprehensive look at their buildings so that they really look at a holistic list of energy measures that would benefit that building going forward in operation.
Well, there are a few things that we could straighten out that I happen to know about the program if you would tell my fellow counselors. First of all, the financing is not by the town of Barnstable. It's done by your program.
Correct.
And we are the agent collecting it as a betterment and sending you the money, as I recall.
Yes, we will be utilizing an open market third-party structure. So property owners will work with lenders directly of their choosing to access the money. There'll be no public funds that will be used. Mass Development is not loaning any money directly. We are not issuing any bonds. We are not asking municipalities to loan any money. This is all third-party direct lending to the property owner.
So clearly, this is not Barnstable's responsibility. This is not Barnstable concerned about the debt. This is not Barnstable concerned about collections, although we will work as a betterment agent to try to collect the betterment charges as well.
Correct.
Very good. Counselors, any questions? Yes, Counsel Rap Crisetti.
Thank you. So there, I know there's an R-PACE and a C-PACE. Can you explain the difference and why we're not adopting the residential as well as the commercial?
Sure. So enabling legislation, which was passed in August of 2016, only enabled commercial and industrial PACE. Under that statute, the definition also includes multifamily, five units and more. A residential enabling legislation for PACE would need to be authorized by the Commonwealth in order for residential PACE program to be administered.
Okay. And I know it can require staff time, legal time. What do you anticipate, you know, that we're going to need another position for that?
No. As the program administrator, Mass Development sits in the middle of all the transactions. So we actually develop the guidelines under which all the projects are approved. We receive all the applications. We essentially let the municipality offer this as a tool to the businesses and property owners in their community. If a project is approved, then we would work with the municipality in terms of billing and collecting the betterment assessment that would be used to repay the financing. That would be the effort that the municipality would have to undertake. Because of the way the Mass general laws work, we do not have any flexibility to collect the betterment assessment outside of the billing and collection of the tax payments. We have to work in the same manner as that collection. So we would work with the town to figure out what their existing system is, and we've already talked with the town about what that is, and implement the collection of the betterment assessment within that system. There would be an effort in terms of collecting and passing that payment through, but the municipality would not be required to disburse that payment if it was not received by the property owner.
So, and it's tied to the property, so the property can transfer and the owner's got nothing to do with it? It's restricted to the property?
Assessment automatically transfers in ownership, yes.
Thank you.
Counselors, any questions? Counselors, at this point, I'm going to recuse myself. I do own some commercial property in town. I just don't think it's appropriate that I vote on this as well. Thank you very much for your time. I wish you great success.
Thank you for your time.
I will hand off to my Vice President, Counsel Flores.
Let the record show that Council President Jim Crocker has recused himself and left the dais. Members of the council, any questions relative to this particular issue? All those in favor moving the question?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have a second. We move the question. It's now time for a roll call majority vote. Assistant Clerk Janet Murphy.
Rap Crisetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. We're at the top, and it's 2020-028. Going this way. How about Counsel Stein Hilber, please help me? Oh, you're accusing, go to the other end. Counsel Cullum, can I ask a favor, please? Could you help me with 2020-28?
Yes. Let's see. Item 2020-28, resolve acceptance of revised conservation restriction to be held by Conservation Commission 200 Communication Way Barnstable Map 314 Parcel 36. This may be acted upon with a majority roll call vote, as written.
Mr. President, I'm going to recuse myself at this time.
Please let the record reflect that Counsel Stein Hilber has recused himself from the vote on 2020-28. And we're fortunate to have our Senior Counsel Ruth Wild with us tonight. How are you? How are you?
The conservation restriction that is before the town council this evening for approval was a condition of the development agreement between the Cape Cod Commission and the Everly Apartment Complex. This restriction will dedicate a 9.5 parcel of land located at 200 Communication Way for conservation purposes in perpetuity. The restriction allows public access for passive outdoor recreation such as walking, bird watching, but not motorized vehicle access. The restriction is to be held by the Barnstable Conservation Commission. You may recall that in May of 2017, this council voted for this restriction. And then it went to the State Department of EEA, and they had some concerns, and there were some negotiations back and forth about some of the provisions, which were resolved favorably. But at this moment in time, the EEA requested that this council and the Conservation Commission and Land Acquisition Committee all review the new revised restriction again, which occurred in July of 2019. Both the Land Acquisition Committee and the Conservation Commission approved the revised restrictions. So the next step is for this council to approve the final form and authorize the town manager and the president of the town council to execute and deliver all documents necessary to effectuate the Conservation Commission. With me, and he waited patiently as well, is Brian Dugdale, the attorney representative of Everly throughout this permitting process, and he's available to answer any questions that you might have.
I knew he thought, I thought he looked like a barrister. Look at him hanging in there. How are you, sir? Thank you for hanging with us tonight. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Counselors? Yes, this morning. Thank you. Counselors, any questions? Yes, Counsel Rap Crisetti.
Not a question, but an observation in the advertisement of this article. It does have the street address. Just for the record, it has the map and parcel number, but it also has the street address. So just...
Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to the Assistant Town Clerk for a vote.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Crisetti?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. Counsel Neary, could you assist me on 2020-29?
2020-29. Yes, Mr. President, this is new business to be referred to the planning board. It's item number 2020-29. It's an amendment of the zoning map of the town of Barnstable, Massachusetts, to amend and expand the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district to include parcels 013004, 013005, and 013052, as written.
I have a first and a second to refer this to the planning board, 00202029. All those in favor referring this out to the planning board, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? And please note that we are short Counsel Cullum on the vote. Thank you. I would go with Counsel Beeden Bender, please, for 2020-030.
Thank you, President Crocker. This is new business to be referred to public hearing on October 3, 2019. This is item number 2020-030. This is an appropriation and loan order in the amount of $800,000 for the Route 28 East Sewer Expansion and Pump Station.
Second.
I got a first and a second to refer out to a public hearing on October 3, 19, 2020-030. All those in favor of referring out to a public hearing, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. I'll take the Vice President, please, 2020-31.
Yes, this is new business and may be acted upon. It is a roll call majority vote, item 2020-031. It is a resolve to request that the Cape's Legislative Delegation support House 3507 in act to promote housing choices, as written.
I have a first and a second. I will be turning this over to the Vice President, as I've made my intentions known, to develop housing at some point. Mr. Vice President? Okay, this may be acted upon by roll call majority vote. Motion to move? All those? All those in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry. We're just moving the question. Yeah. To take the vote on... Yeah, there is.
Resolve that the town council hereby directs the town manager to communicate to the Cape's Legislative Delegation that the town council supports House 3507 in act to promote housing choices and to request that the Cape delegation votes to support H3507.
Do I have to retract that? Because we had a second on this. Okay. Then I'll turn it over to Assistant Town Clerk for a vote. This is a roll call.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Crisetti?
No.
Hebert?
Disrespected, no.
You got nine.
Okay, next.
Counsel Stein Hilber, could you read item 2020-033?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This is appointments to a board committee or commission. Item 2020-033. Golf Committee Ken Moray of Kettuitt is a regular member, term expiring June 2022. Sandy Neckboard Hank Farnham of West Barnstable, regular member, term expiring June 2021. Youth Commission Lily Atwell of Hyannis, regular member, term expiring June 2020. Nina Barrett of Hyannis, regular member, term expiring June 2020. Brendan Dowling of Hyannis, regular member, term expiring June 2020. This is a first reading to refer to a second reading on October 3, 2019.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second. All those, any discussion?
We seem to have a little confusion about a piece of that last puzzle, so if I could ask you indulgent, I'd like to take a one-minute hiatus so that this is our last article, so I'd like to make sure before we vote our last one that we're all set with the previous one. So please let me take a hiatus. We'll be back in two minutes. Thank you.